I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 14th. I had the wrong date on here. Mr. Paulson, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
Chair Birch?
Here. Would you all please stand and join Vice Chair Badami in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To reflect the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson, are there any written communications this evening?
There are. There are desk items for item number three, item number two, and I believe that's it. Two and four.
Has everyone had a chance to review the desk items? Does anyone need any additional time? Great. Are there any requested continuances this evening?
There is one requested continuance. We're requesting that item five be continued.
All right.
Samud.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any reports this evening? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, we had a meeting today. Three of the Planning Commissioners attended. It considered two things. This was a conceptual development advisory committee, which typically meets fairly infrequently, but today we had two very interesting items. The first matter we considered related to the North Forty, which as you all know is a very, very large project. We got to review some very preliminary plans, but they'd spent a lot of time developing those plans, and there was a lot of thought behind them. And the purpose of the meeting was simply to get our feedback, because as you all know, there's nothing binding about what we're doing. We're trying to help what will be an applicant. In fact, we found out today, the party, the three parties developing that property, did in fact file their application this afternoon. So that will be ultimately coming before us. So that was a very, very interesting meeting. We had all, we had three representatives of the three entities that are developing the property. The second matter we considered related to 475 and 485, Alberta Way, and as you all know, that's a very interesting piece of property with some development recently occurred on one side of the entrance, some other proposed for the left side of the entrance. This is the back of the property. There are two office buildings back there, which are essentially, we're told, 80% rented, which is good. They are proposing to add a third building on a piece of property they've acquired behind that property. That property has very difficult access to pine, but they're proposing that that not be used, but they come out through Alberto. So they were proposed to add an additional 20,000 square foot building. So that's one they're asking for. But two, they do not have the right at the moment to use medical office building as well as other office buildings. So they're asking that we allow them, if need be, to have medical office building. So we had a full and frank discussion with them. We told them what some of our concerns were, and I would anticipate that we will be hearing from them.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor, did you have a report for us?
I do, thank you. So a new committee actually is meeting and will be meeting until December 31st, but it's the Planned Development Study Committee, appointed by the Town Council. It's comprised of three Planning Commissioners, two council members, and appointed community members, see one in the audience tonight, with experience in business and land development and construction. And the purpose is to study the use of the planned development overlay zoning designations in the town's land use development process. The issue was first studied by Town Council, and then the results were studied by the Planning Commission. And then after receiving public testimony, the Planning Commission unanimously decided that there was further study needed, and the town should consider revising what was presented to us from the ad hoc committee of the Town Council. So thus, this committee was created. And our purpose really is to conduct further research regarding the history and the use of planned development zoning and formulate recommendations to Town Council to either add additions or to keep with what the ad hoc committee has suggested. We will also be looking and studying the CUP process for land use changes within our town. And the point would be looking at commercial areas changing to residential uses. And we'll study to see if the town should consider a modification of that practice. The final recommendation is due December 31st, and we meet every other Thursday until then, I think, for about two hours. And if anybody would like to attend that meeting, please check with staff on future dates. The next meeting date is Thursday, October 22nd, and that's what I have to report.
Great, thank you. We are all very anxious to hear what comes out of that committee. Do we have any other reports saying none? All right. "The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for the public to participate. One, written comments are always very welcome. We appreciate the emails and the dialogue that we have with our town citizens. Second, at the meetings of the Commission, you will have two opportunities that you could address the Commission. First is during verbal communications. During that time, members of the public have the opportunity to address the Commission on any items which are not on the agenda. And then second, during an agendaized item, during the public participation portion, you have time then to address the Commission about that particular item. If you do plan to speak tonight, we ask that you please fill out a speaker card. They're located in the benches behind, probably in front of you. We ask that you make sure that you state your name and what agenda item you plan to speak on, and just hand those up to staff, and we will make sure that we get you called on." We are at the verbal communications portion. I do not have any cards for anyone, so if no one was planning to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, we'll just continue on. Our first item then is going to be our consent calendar. That's the approval of the minutes for September 23rd, 2015. Before we vote on this item though, on the consent calendar, any person wishing to have a consent item discussed may request that the Planning Commission remove it from the consent calendar, and it will be heard under the new public hearing section of the agenda. Do I have anyone who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Kane?
I'd like to discuss the minutes, so does that mean I'm pulling it from the calendar?
Yes.
I'm requesting to pull it from the calendar.
All right. Do we have to vote on that? We don't have to vote to pull it off?
Please pull it and announce.
Okay, we're going to pull it, and I'm going to call it agenda item number one, so please go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Item two in the minutes. These minutes have a name. Are they referred to as action minutes? Where we write down the comments of the public, but not necessarily the Commission, are those action minutes?
Correct.
Well, I think one item that the Commission discussed, and in fact, may have tried to make its way to the motion, was that when the applicant, it's written, "Requesting approval for a vineyard greater than 3,000 feet." It was already 9,000 feet. So I always felt like they were requesting to have a 9,000-foot vineyard, not, they already had it. And the reason that I supported, in addition to the maker of the motion, who made a persuasive argument, I mentioned, and I hope it got into the motion and should get into the minutes, a large part of the support for the vineyard larger than 3,000 is that it was already there, because allegedly they were told by staff that it was okay to do it. Now, that claim went unrefuted by anybody. Staff, public, us. And I found that a bit persuasive, that if a member of staff, that alleged member of staff, who is allegedly no longer here anymore, you know, as far as looking at this kind of thing in the future, whether it has any precedent value, we do it by case-by-case basis. Part of why this thing that was already done in violation was approved is because it was alleged and unrefuted that they were told they could do it. So do we think we need any reference to that consideration?
So that would be the Commission's choice. If you feel that's important to add that, and that was part of the discussion, then we can go back and amend and look at the tape. And I remember that discussion also, and we can put in more detail in a paragraph, if that's the Commission's desire, and feel it's important in the action minutes.
I may have tried to get it into the motion.
The tape is always available and part of the actual record, but if you feel it's important in the minutes and the rest of the Commission does, we can send it back and bring it back at your next meeting.
As I recall, when Commissioner O'Donnell made the motion, I made a comment hoping to get that in the motion, but it depends on what the Commission wants to do. I'm just trying to protect the 3,000 and say, this is a reason we did what I did.
Understood. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I certainly would have no objection if we added to the minutes some notation about the fact that essentially the vineyard was already in existence, and there was an allegation that a member of the staff had erroneously thought that was okay. So if the staff would simply put that in the record, I would be surprised if any of us would object to that.
As the secondor in the motion, I wouldn't either. In fact, I think it adds clarification. It might be useful. Thank you.
So then are we making a new motion for approval of the minutes with the addition? Is that what you were doing? And Joanne, you are going to be the secondor on that again?
I am.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you're, okay. Passes unanimously. Commissioner Erickson was being slow. All right. We are now going to move on to item number two. This is a zone change application, Z-15-001, and an architectural and site application, S-15-018, requesting approval to rezone a property from O to R-1D, demolish an existing office building, construct a new single-family residence, and construct an accessory structure with reduced setbacks and obtain a grading permit. This is APN number 410-16-026. Are there any disclosures from any Commissioners on this item? And has everyone had an opportunity to view the site? Great. Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving us our report this evening?
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioners. This property is located at the corner of Monterey Avenue and Andrews Street, and the surrounding properties include single-family homes and a few duplexes and multifamily homes. There are office buildings down the street on Monterey Avenue. The applicant proposes to rezone the property from an office to an R-1D. The R-1D zoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning, and you can see that in Exhibit, you can see that in Exhibit seven. The shaded square is the subject site. And this would make the property consistent with the general plan designation of medium-density residential, which is also seen in Exhibit eight. Again, the shaded square is the subject site. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing medical office building and construct a two-story craftsman-style home and a detached garage. The applicant has worked with staff and the consulting architect to modify the initial proposed project to reduce the scale and mass and to get an architecture that fits more within, is compatible with the neighborhood. Materials for the proposed house includes cedar shingle siding, stone veneer, composition roof, and a wraparound front porch with a standing seam metal roof. And you can see this displayed behind you on the materials board, as well as attached in your staff report. The proposed project meets zoning standards, and it's not the largest home in the immediate neighborhood. The applicant has reached out to their surrounding neighbors. The adjacent neighbor to the south has provided a letter of support, and that's attached in the staff's report. The neighbor to the west or to the rear of the project has contacted staff this last week with questions. And tonight you were provided a desk item that describes, attaches her emails, and addresses her concerns and support of the project. Three of the concerns for her project, of the project are that there's an existing 14-inch diameter redwood tree located to the rear of her property. Staff reviewed with the consulting arborist, as well as applied the existing conditions of approval, which would require the applicant to provide adequate tree protection measures to that tree. The neighbor also wanted clarification on a reduction of a fence height between the two properties that is required due to the requirement for the town's traffic view area requirement. So she met with, spoke with the applicant and discussed that, and was satisfied with that discussion. The neighbor also expressed concern regarding drainage for the site. The neighboring properties have experienced flooding in the past due to heavy rains. And in order to address this, planning staff and engineering work together to include two additional conditions of approval. One would require a drainage study to be prepared by the applicant. Staff has attached that modified condition of approval in Exhibit 19. So staff recommends, Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed project for the zone change and architectural site and application to the Town Council with modifying conditions that again are found in Exhibit 19. And this completes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the questions that we now ask of staff are directly related to the report just given or any procedures. Additional questions of staff about other items in the application, we will hold until after the public portion of the hearing. So do we have any questions? Okay. Commissioner Hansen?
You mean her verbal report, the one that she just gave?
Yes, the report that we, yeah, the verbal report that she gave, which is the report which is in our packet. So we are going to, I've had, Vice Chair and I, have had some discussions with staff, and what we're going to be working towards is the questions for any of the staff, given the presentation, need to be limited to that report or any procedural questions moving forward. All other questions, we're going to hold until we've had, given the applicant a chance to speak, we've heard public comment.
So if we have a question that's in the report, and she didn't specifically mention it, we can ask it now?
Yes, absolutely, because it is a part of the staff report, yes.
Then I do have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Hansen?
Thank you. I was glad to see this application, because I know that a lot of times we've seen a CUP as a replacement for a zoning change, and it does appear that, based on the maps and the things that were presented, that most of the general plan designations for that area are all residential. My question was about, is this the first time that we've actually had a zone change for that particular neighborhood? I thought there was mention in the report about some other sites that had been zoned as office, general plan designation of residential, but became residential because of a CUP?
Yes, that's correct. So the three properties are located directly across the street on Monterey, and 1997 were approved through a CUP process to allow residential, even though they're underlining, because their existing zoning was office. So that did occur in 97 for those three properties. So they, the three properties across the street do have CUPS to allow residential on that zone.
Okay, and I have a second question. It was about the architectural and site application. Although it complies, assuming that the zone change is approved, there would be an additional request for reducing the rear setback by two feet from what would be allowed if it were in fact zoned as residential. Is that correct?
Right. So the request by the applicant is to reduce the accessory structures rear setback to three feet. That is something that is in the code that can be applied for and being examined to determine if that's appropriate and compatible with its surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, and the accessory structure is the garage?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
So specific to your report, my question is, do you know that I think you and staff should be complimented for the response you gave to the letter from the citizen Ms. Page? She apparently brought up three good points, and staff, the town responded with a lot of substance, that you would look at the drains, you'd look at the tree, you'd look at the fence. And I don't think we always see that, so I was impressed, and do you know, I appreciate it?
Thank you.
I made it a question. Was it, all right?
That was a good comment. Do we have any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you. All right, we're now going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to 10 minutes. So I know that I have your card, Mr. Black, and I assume, are you all, or you're the neighbor. So the 10 minutes will be for both of you, so please just make sure you both take the time to introduce yourselves, so it's on record.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having us. I'm the applicant, Michael Black, and I as well want to thank Erin and the rest of staff for a thorough staff report. We're here to answer any questions, and right now I'm going to hand it over to my architect to go through the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I just prepared a quick process so you can understand what we went through for the project, and it's two-parted. As you know, we have the zoning change, and we also have the architectural and site application.
For the record, will you state your name?
I'm sorry. Beth Worsamo, Studio 3. I apologize. I'll just get this out here. Walk around. Okay, so as you know, we're here for rezoning. This was brought to us by the Planning Department. They requested that instead of a CUP, which the three properties directly across the street had, that to be more conforming with the general plan, that we would rezone from office to an R-1D. You've seen all of these reasons in your previous staff report. I think they're pretty straightforward. And the project then moves forward with an R-1D proposal in terms of setbacks, et cetera, compared to office. If you've got any questions about these, I'm happy to answer them after, but again, staff report was very thorough on the logic behind CUP versus, I'm sorry, rezone versus a CUP. As a reminder, we are the property that's highlighted right here on the corner. Those three properties that you see across the street are the three properties that, while they're showing up on Erin's previous diagram as office, are indeed residential houses on them. And this is just a quick analysis also of square footage and FAR that was conducted to be sure that we met the design guidelines. A little error on our allowed slide, I believe it's 2862 is allowed, our proposed square footage is 2853. We are not the largest house in the immediate neighborhood as deemed by the city. We've also broken out just the detached garage, the porch, deck areas, et cetera, so that you could understand overall square footage. Lot coverage, I think you've seen this also on the plans. We do have a 32% coverage. I think the neighborhood has up to 33% kind of around it in immediate neighborhood neighbors. Just a reminder, I'm sure you've been there, there's an office building, an antiquated office building from the 60s on the site. We are proposing obviously removing that and a new single-family home built in place. This is just a brief analysis of the style and type that exists in the neighborhood. The sources used are the field guides that are commonly accepted by urban planners, planning departments, et cetera. The same neighbors that you saw previously. We've broken down a neighborhood analysis in case there's any questions on materials or style, plate heights, et cetera. We've given you the address, a picture of the house, and the housing type. What you basically see is that this is a neighborhood, I'll just kind of click through these, that is somewhat consistent in character in terms of new traditional homes being more in a craftsman-type style, but definitely varied, everything from Italianate to post-war ranch to some random commercial projects tucked in here or there. Let's see, so we can just go through all those. On our site, obviously, we have the corner of Andrews and Monterey. The house is pulled to the left side to help navigate the corner setbacks. The garage with the reduced side setbacks is tucked up against the back corner. One of the reasons we want to do that is obviously it's a garage, it's a lower building, it's kind of more in conformance with what you see in R-1D neighborhoods right now. And also with the clipped corner due to view and engineering, giving us that little bit of extra room at the back of the site is nice, because we can, we have to kind of get out of this additional corner setback that exists there. It is a detached garage, lower square footage and lower heights, roof plates. First and second floor plans, just show this as a house. And then we have our proposed exterior elevations. As you probably read in the Cannon Group's review, multiple reviews of the project, we started off initially with more of a farmhouse Victorian, which is common downtown, and it was requested that we move more into a craftsman-type style home to fit a little bit better in the neighborhood. So what you see here is details that make that statement. So we do have the lower pitched roofs. We've broken down, instead of having stacked bays that were existing on the front elevation before. We've had use of mullions, shingles, and railing details, column details, et cetera, that are consistent in character with something deemed kind of craftsman. You can see the materials are continued around the whole facade. We do have a back porch. Our garage is very simple. Obviously, garage door faces our side street access, and then just standard walls kind of around the sides. These are just examples of similar homes that combine posts, painted posts, shingles, and metal roofs. Some of them are in Los Gatos, others are just examples of the types of material combination that we're talking about. And you saw our materials board, you can see actual one like this that just has the scanned images. We've got pieces of the roof, the stone, and the shingle painted in the proposed color, as well as images from gelled one for the windows. This is our response to Larry Cannon's comments as we process through this project, and I think those are kind of important to go through from a site and architecture applications standpoint. One of the things that Larry brought up was, he didn't like the two-story projecting bay at the front, which you haven't, I'm not sure if you've seen the original proposal that went to him. They have, okay, it is attached. And so what we've done is changed that front facade to have tucked-back bay windows and the wraparound porch. The next one had to do with roof pitches. We reduced those roof pitches to be more in keeping with craftsman-type roof pitches rather than shingle-style or farmhouse Victorian-style roof pitches. And also addressed just open gables and hip roof options around the house, as you can see on the plans. We are requesting a 10-foot burst floor plate height, and that is something that we would like to keep. One of the things that we've done to help navigate that is we actually lowered the house by six inches, and also then the shifting of the roof plates to a lower roof plate lowered the overall home to about a foot below the maximum allowed height. We also have added additional beam details and trim details at the porch, so that it's further detailed and has a lower look you don't just see straight into the house. Again, we addressed his roof pitch comments. Let's see, number six. Again, this just has to do with the porch. An element that was really important to us architecturally, especially because this house does sit on a corner, was to have a wraparound porch, so we kind of have two street furnages that are front. We really wanted to be responsive to that and not have a side house that was inappropriate for the long side of the property. So that front porch element is a critical architectural element to us, it's detailed very nicely, so even though the main level and the subsequent porch have a 10-foot plate height, it does stack, wrap, et cetera, detail-wise, and drops down. We are using a standing seam metal roof. You can see the detail, I think Michael brought some extra pieces. Oh, they're in the back, back there, I think, sorry. So that you can see where we've added that detail, and that detail exists not on our main roofs, but on our accent roofs, things like the porch and some open gable pieces. Siding, Larry wanted our corners mitered instead of having trim corners, so that's not a problem, we're happy to do that. And then windows, we do have a gelled one aluminum-clad exterior painted wood interior window. Did you bring a window corner? Okay. Well, you can see a picture of a gelled one on the materials board. Okay, I think that's it. So just going back to our elevation. There we go. All right, did you have anything else? Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Talisfor?
The accessory structure at 774 square feet to be used as a garage? The accessory structure at 774 square feet to be used as a garage, why wouldn't you trim the size to meet the rear setback?
We're allowed to have a garage that is that big and at this time, we're not proposing a basement, so the garage is for storage for the home as well as garage space. Typically takes about 500 square feet to have a garage today, so the additional 200 and some odd square feet are used for storage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Taosfor?
Let's just continue with the garage. How, what is the height of that garage?
I think our maximum height, I want to say, at the ridge is 14 feet.
About, or it is?
I'm getting there, just one second. We're at 14 feet, three and a half inches, to be precise.
14 feet. Okay, and what's the length of that? The reason I'm asking the question is that it's a very narrow lot, really, it's, well, it's actually patterned after most of the other lots in that neighborhood. And this does seem to run the whole entire land, you know, a lot of the fence, but I would like to see that elevation again with the plan on the site.
So obviously, this is our proposed garage element. We have the engineering required pull-in space to get off the street or be able to back up. That's what's maintained here, more than maintained, actually. And I'll get you the dimension on the long wall of the garage in one moment. 33 feet, eight inches.
And the width of the lot is? 60, okay, so takes up about half of the lot. Okay, let's move on. Just some housekeeping pieces here, and I'm referring to Larry Cannon's August 18th design review. And I'm really disappointed that you didn't have the window here because he actually asked that you supply a sample window, and I think what he wanted us to see was that it actually did replicate a wood window. And what I would like to know is, are we at a gloss finish? Are we at a non-gloss finish? What is the finish of that window?
The finish is a standard factory satin finish that you see on any aluminum-clad metal window. I believe, hold on, hold on, hold on. I believe that Larry Cannon's question came because on our original set of plans, we labeled the windows as metal windows. So it came up that perhaps were they steel sash or case windows as opposed to a typical aluminum-clad wood interior painted window. So there was a misunderstanding about a label on the original drawings that was leading Larry to believe that it was a steel sash window, which is more of a commercial storefront-type window, which is not what we're using. We're using a gelled one products or equal, Colby, gelled one, et cetera.
So I, when you say satin, I have no idea. The gloss of a satin window. I mean, I know what satin is in some cases and not others. It's just, it's a point that it would have been helpful because you do have a lot of windows.
I think it's a standard factor, it's a standard factor.
That's, thank you. Okay, that's really not going to help me now. And I just wanted to check that you're using real wood shingles, is that correct?
Yes.
And they're up, is that what that gray color is?
It's a real wood.
So I need you to speak into the microphone so that we can...
It's a real wood cedar shingle that's painted on top.
Okay. And then Larry's other, and I happen to agree with him on this, is about lowering the porch and the first-floor plate height to a uniform nine-foot elevation.
All right, I think also if you look at the original submission that was given to Larry Cannon, we did not have, hold on, let me get to the, let me get to the elevations. So in our original submission to Larry Cannon, we had some stacked bays that gave a very vertical feel to the home. We also were missing things like an additional fascia and gutter line as well as cross beam line that you see on more traditional homes. So what you see here is we've added that detail in so that when you're looking at this porch from the front and the side, both sides and the corner, you have a porch that is perceptibly lowered based by, based on the fact that there are now structural elements that are visible and clad nicely with trim. One of the reasons we don't want to lower the plate of the porch and the plate of the house is that we're already set back because we're a corner and we're applying this wraparound porch concept to be really responsive to the neighborhood. If we start lowering all these pitches, this roof pitch of the porch as it extends out, because it's got, it's got fairly decent depth to it so that we can pull back off that corner, starts getting really low just by geometry math. So what we proposed to do to help bring down the height of the building, like I said earlier, was to lower the house a little bit more than what we really wanted to and also lower the roof pitches. So we are a whole foot underneath what's allowed from a height perspective overall.
One thing, you did, I think you said in one of your papers here that your design is an interpretation of a, let me get the words right, of a craftsman, I believe is what you said. It's consistent with a current interpretation of a more updated craftsman. The question I have, it seems that it's, there's a couple of issues that I'm seeing and maybe you could help me understand this, but you're on a corner lot, so you have a very prominent place in that neighborhood. And you have a house that I believe is 29 feet, one and a half inches. And the roof that you have chosen to use with this interpretation seems to be adding to the bulk of that. And so I'm questioning how you could bring that down further if you really were trying to, you know, design this after a craftsman, because one of the outstanding features of a craftsman home is the low-pitched roof with the gable ends. And I don't really see that here at all. So I'm wondering if you could help me understand.
Well, I think as with all current architecture that you're seeing, I guess I shouldn't say all, most current architecture that you're seeing, if you, if you study the field guides of American architecture, you'll actually find that they're all considered new traditional with influences of something. So it's not a real craftsman home. It's not a real shingle home. So they're all hybrid interpretations or blends of those. I think we say it's an interpretation of craftsman here because we're also using shingles to be a little bit more traditional and some other details. Those are, those are materials that you do see on craftsman, but you also see on shingle style homes. So, you know, perhaps we should call it a hybrid version of craftsman and shingle style homes. We do have a lowered, a lowered roof pitch, the open gables. I think, are you referring to the metal roof as bringing up your bulk and mass? Or are you referring to the rest of our comp shingle roof?
No, I'm referring to Larry's comment about lowering this house to the nine-foot floor plate.
I'm sorry, I thought your question was about the roof.
Well, it is, and I, it's about can you, could you lower the roof anymore for that, to accommodate that nine-foot floor plate or not? If it was designed this way?
So...
Or would it be better if you...
Let's just take a look at the side elevation for a second. Our maximum height occurs right here. Doesn't occur across the whole body of the house, pulls back from the corner, so what you're seeing here is actually way back in the house. So I think we've actually done a fairly good job addressing the overall bulk and mass of the roof by pulling that back and addressing the corner with a lower roof at the wraparound porch. I think lowering, lowering the roof pitch from what it is right now to just gain a little extra height actually flattens out what you see for some of the roof and is disproportionate to the, to the walls of the home that you'll see. And I think then actually the house looks bigger because you're looking at a lot of vertical facade versus something that's pitching away or back from you in all directions. Now notice, we've kind of hipped away from the corner and the adjacent neighbor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So it was my understanding that Mr. Cannon was satisfied when you lowered the level and left the, lowered the floor and left the plate level at 10 feet, based on the fact that you had lowered the floor level and that there were both houses in the neighborhood that had nine-foot and 10-foot.
And 10-foot, please.
And is that consistent with your understanding with your last interaction with Mr. Cannon?
Yes, I believe that that was...
That he was satisfied? No, it's a simple question.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
A follow-up to that?
Yes.
Then should I be not referring to August 18th because I, did, was there another meeting with Mr. Cannon after August 18th? I should ask staff or who should I address that to? The applicant?
Yes, hi, thank you. So you're right in that Larry Cannon Group provided a last review of the project and that the applicant provided a response. And in that time, staff had many conversations on the phone with Mr. Cannon to address those issues and working with the applicant as well. So what summarized in the staff report describes that we had worked with them, talked about, looked at all adjacent neighbors, existing properties, as well as the elements that the applicant introduced to address Mr. Cannon's concerns.
Thank you. I wish that had been noted in, that would have been clearer if you had noted it in the staff report that you had, you know, some subsequent telephone conversations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
So following up on that and notwithstanding, Mr. Cannon still does not support the metal roof over the porch. He wants the roofing material to match the rest of the home. Is that correct?
So in our conversation, I apologize for not clarifying the conversation in the report, he said that it, it can go either way. There's examples in architecture that show, as we've just shown tonight, that has a mix and then there's also projects that show complete, one solid roofing material.
But in this particular neighborhood, there is no metal roof.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kane?
I wanted to share my concern regarding the garage and also in the residential design guidelines, we have that famous 522 to decide immediate neighborhood and special attention is given to a corner parcel. And I think that was brought out earlier that whereas it may be a very, very fine house, it's, it's on a very, very clear corner. And I felt some of the imposition of the size of the house on that corner lot. It certainly changes the viewscape and the neighbors in terms of 2, 7, 3, and 6 are one stories. So I have some concern about the compatibility of the neighborhood. You know, I'm not an architect, clearly you are. I just wish that thing was further away from the corner and that the, you know, the response on the garage question was a little more ameliorating. Garages don't count in the FAR except in special circumstances?
Garages have their own FAR calculation.
Okay. So the garage is about twice the size of the neighbors. That is those who have garages. And we have, we have reasons for having FAR standards and I just feel a circumvention of adhering to the, to the square feet on the house by about 10 feet and then having an almost 800-foot garage when everybody else has got 400. I exaggerate to make my point, but the numbers are pretty close. I feel we're just cutting corners to create quasi-additional FAR in the form of a 800-foot garage, square-foot garage. And at the same time, that, that 800-foot square foot, square-foot garage needs a waiver on the setbacks. It's like, you know, you want to put a super garage in there, at least abide by the setbacks. I'm expressing my concerns to you now because when the, when the mic gets closed, I don't know if we can discuss it further, but I want you to know where I'm at. It's, I walked all of those streets back and forth, up and down, and it's not a disclosure, I talked to neighbors, but I didn't really talk anything of substance. It's a neighborhood in transition and anything that, anything likely to be built on that corner would be a great improvement and the neighbors are looking forward to that great improvement. I'm looking forward to communicating with you that those corner lots, mass and size within two inches of pushing the envelope and then an 800-foot square garage, it's just, I need, I need some, I need some castor oil to get that all down. It's, it's a bit much and we'll talk more about it, I suppose. But I was, wanted to let you know I agreed with some of the other comments.
All right, do we have any other questions of the applicant? No? All right. Thank you. I will now call Bridget. I hope I don't say your name wrong. Ballingall?
Ballingall.
Okay, it's close. Thank you.
My name is Bridget Ballingall. I live at 511 Monterey Avenue and we are indeed very excited about this proposed project. I have, we built our house that was approved. It had a very large garage. We are not on a corner lot in 2007. It was a new construction, had a full basement, and I think we, we almost maxed out the amount of square footage that we could build and we have loved the neighborhood. It is a neighborhood in transition, you're absolutely right, and so we are very excited to see this project come. My only concern or my only comments to you and to the builder is that I'm just concerned in maintaining any mature trees. I think that's of a greater impact than the mass of the house, as if there have been homes around us have gone up that mature trees have changed and that's really changed the whole landscape of the neighborhood more than the, the buildings that were constructed after the trees were taken down. My other concern is also the drainage. I'm not concerned that the project is going to impact the drainage as much as I'm concerned that the city allows the water to be pumped and for many months of the year, the water is in the street and I see as a health and safety issue. So I would just want to comment that we would hope that the drainage issue in that area would be improved with this project and not go in the opposite direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
I appreciate your concern for the trees. As part of the public record, there's an extensive arborist's report on this project that determines which trees are going to go and therefore are eligible for replacement. And the number of trees that are going, if those trees were to be replaced in the same number, it just, it'd be an encumbrance. So not all the trees are being replaced. There'll be an, an in lieu of fee paid for the trees that are not replaced and the big guy in the back is being totally protected. Were you familiar with all of that?
I was not. The tree that also I'm concerned about is the tree that's on the property line, which is also fairly mature. I don't know if that impacts construction or not, but I'm also sensitive to the fact that sometimes trees need to come down when, but that's my own personal preference. I do think there has been some significant impact to that neighborhood with the reduction of mature trees.
Well, concerning the tree on the property line, Erin knows which trees are which by name and it's, it's an extensive report by the arborist and I appreciate your interest in those trees.
Do we have any other questions? I wanted to ask a quick question just for clarification on the comment you made concerning drainage. I wanted to clarify, is your concern that this project in any way will increase drainage issues or were you just outlining some drainage issues that just exist in the area?
I do not believe that this project is going to add to the drainage issues. I do think that there are drainage issues on that street.
Okay.
And I'm hoping that sometimes, I know when I went through my construction project, we were required to... we were required to ameliorate some things that had to do with sidewalks and, and not drainage, but sidewalks in, in the street. We had to rebuild a portion of the street. And so I'm just hoping that there would be, if there's an opportunity to put in additional drainage as a part of this project, whether it's a collaboration with the cities, if it's a city responsibility or the homeowner's responsibility, that that would be taken into effect because this is one of the worst drainage situations I've seen in, in any city, but certainly here in, in Los Gatos is, there is a, a running river down a lot adjacent to the property that's been a concern of mine since I moved there. I think anybody who's familiar with that street knows what I'm talking about.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you. And our next speaker is Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I would just like to say that I support the zone change, changing the zoning to conform with the general plan rather than circumventing the intent by using a CUP. So thank you for that and I hope you support that. I did not really look at the architecture, but in, in reading the report, the one thing that did stand out to me was the size of the garage in comparison to the other garages on, on the street, plus the fact that it is not deep enough to do tandem parking and therefore in a sense, it's a storage shed. And if it were a separate structure, it would be counted towards the FAR for the house. And I believe that in the past we have, or the commission has, looked at garages that have space other than for the parking of cars as space that is counted towards the FAR. And that's, that's just the comment I wanted to make, especially given the fact that the garage seems out of scale with all of the other garages in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Wait, hold on, Lee. Commissioner Kane?
So Ms. Quintana, you, you were for many years of planning commission.
Yes.
We know that. But I'm wondering, when you say, you said something to the effect of it was not the intent to create storage. Are you saying that in, you know, were you there when they wrote it that the garage was exempt from the FAR? Were you there when they expressed an intent that it was for cars?
I was not there, but I, I, I could give you some background, but it would just be hearsay maybe. Maybe I'll just say it. In the past, when I was on the planning commission, I, I did question the size of the FAR for garages because they seemed very large comparison to the size, lots that they could occur on. And the planning director at the time said to me that, well, they just sat down and in a half an hour, they just picked a number and decided that the house FAR could be this and the garage FAR could be that. So especially with garages, since most of them don't max out the garage space, it just adds to the mass of the house. And if you were to ask me, just, I didn't go look at this. I know the neighborhood, but looking from the drawing, it looks like it's a pretty massive house and then adding a very big garage to it.
I have my answer.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to know if you were there and could establish intent of the garage, thinking that you might have been one of the authors.
All right.
I know my, my storage space in my garage counts towards my square footage.
Okay. All right. I assume there were no other questions? No? All right, that, we now have, the applicant can come back and address anything that you just heard. You have an additional five minutes.
Okay, so this is just a planning diagram. I just want to point out the detached and less than five-foot setbacks that exist locally on accessory structures, whether they are used as a garage, a storage shed, a not-so-legal secondary dwelling or whatever it may be that's happening in the backyard. So this is where we're proposing to do it. And ours actually aligns with what's immediately behind us pretty closely. And I'll show you that on the site plan as well. These are all other detached garages. From a scale perspective, something that's sitting between these two is approximately a 400-square-foot garage, just so you can understand. And we've had this one shot on a civil survey, so we are clear on that from a scale perspective. But I'd just like to point out that garages detached and whatever they may be, I, I think that our intent proportionally, let me go to our, how do I flip this back? Let's go to the site plan. So here's that garage that's immediately adjacent to us. It sits closer to probably 450, 500 square feet. And here is the garage that's immediately behind. And you can see we're not coming out as far as they are, although we are pushed further back. So just from a proportion perspective, I feel like we're sitting at a really good responsive spot on the site and within the allowable FAR of the garage. And I'm just supposed to address garage stuff, right? That's the, oh.
You have five minutes to address this.
Okay, so let's see. Commissioner Talisfor, in response to your question about the window, you, it occurred to me while sitting here that there is a window in a sample that we had made for you for a previous project that I think you saw this evening. And that's a gel'dwin window as well. And that is a aluminum clad wood window. So I can't unscrew it from the sample because it's a life-size sample, but you can see that it has that satin finish. It's the exact same manufacturer and is a standard clad, clad window. You can flip around and see that it's wood on the inside, but the same type of detail. So that same sheen, but in a bronze, not black color is what's being proposed.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you for your time.
Yes. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Looking at the garage again, what is the width of the garage insofar as the two vehicles is concerned? I'm trying to, what do we normally, or what, what would you normally allow for two vehicles, forgetting the present size or the width of that garage? What is sort of the minimum size one can have if you're going to have a two-car garage?
Well, code minimum is very different than what people's SUVs fit into. I would say in my office, I don't like to see a garage that's less than 24 feet wide. To put it in perspective, a parking space at Safeway is anywhere from 9 by 18 to 10 by 20, depending upon which one you have, you know, you kind of post and all. So flipping to our garage plan, hold on.
While you look for that, I think, Joel, you were going to give us some clarification on the town code?
Sure. So town code for a two-car garage is 20 by 20, inside clear is the minimum.
Okay. And would you remind me then what, what the width, when you get a moment? What, what the width as designed is?
Sure. So 20 by 20 inside clear means that in the end, we, we net obviously closer to 21 on the outside and we are at 23.
Okay. And the, I, I noticed in the drawing, the upstairs area where it says attic, I, I don't know, but I assume you could probably use some storage in the attic. I don't know. But the, the storage that you otherwise would use, is there room in the garage and if so, where for storage?
Let me get to the garage. Do we have the garage plan in here? Yeah. Okay, so you can see here's our very simple garage. We're at 23 wide to the outside, not the inside, and we are at 33, 8 outside dimensions, again on the long dimension. As you know, we come in here on a driveway off the street. So the intent is to be able to pull two cars in, have bikes, et cetera, and then a cut-across storage that's in this direction that is responsive to our back door, which is also on the far side of the property, kind of over, down over here. So-
What's the depth of that storage?
The depth of that storage? Well, so, so we're at 30, we're at 30, 30, 33. So by the time we get a car in there, maybe eight feet.
Okay, just so I understand. So you might have as much as eight feet when you go behi- behind or the, the front of the cars that drives in. You might have as much as eight feet for storage or a workbench or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
And circulation out that back door.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
So, and is there pa- parking availa- will parking be available on that driveway? Can cars park in that driveway? I couldn't see the-
Yes.
Okay. They'll, they'll be able to accommodate two cars?
Yes, that's an engineering requirement that we have to be so far back.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Commissioner Erickson?
So I'll pitch in on the garage as everyone else had, so I don't feel left out. If you were going, if you were going to reduce the garage, you would presumably reduce the length of the garage, not the width of the garage, I'm assuming from your comments about letting, needing a certain size car to get in.
If we're forced to, yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, when we're-
Because we can't, we can't really reduce width and have it work.
Right. That's one, yeah, that's, I was, I'm sure that I was making the same assumption. So in your opinion as an architect, if you in fact did that, would it change the look of the garage to anyone? In other words, change the mass and the scale of the garage from a, from a viewpoint from the side street or from a neighbor or anyone else by simply, because you would presumably shorten it on its backside, not on its front side, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, I assume you wouldn't push it further into the property, you would, you would, if you would cut off the back end, cut off the eight feet of the back end of it. So in your opinion as an architect, if in fact you did that, would it, would it change the feel and look of it to, in the neighborhood?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
To add on to the question that was just asked, if, if you had to comply with the rear setback requirement and move the garage forward, what would that do to the rest of
Well, I think that we would just end up with unusable space on two, two property lines behind the garage and adjacent to the garage.
But that's what's required in the residential design guidelines.
No, I believe we're allowed to ask for reduced sides, reduced side and rear setback for an accessory structure, correct?
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. We're going to close the public portion of this item and I will ask my commissioners if you have any questions of staff discussion or if anyone wants to make a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would like to make a motion. I realize that it may not go very far, but I'd still like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion in favor of the project, find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to 15303 of the Environmental Quality Act, see Exhibit 2, and the findings required by our Section 2910-09030E. It's also in Exhibit 2 and that relates to the granting approval of a demolition of a commercial building. Make the finding that the project complies with residential design guidelines, see Exhibit 2. Make the required considerations as required by Section 292150 of the Code for granting approval of architectural and site application and forward recommendation to the town council to approve the architect and site application S15018 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plans attached as Exhibit 17. So that would've been, would be my motion.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, you also, part of this needs to be the rezoning. So you need to include you, that in your, let him finish the motion and then we'll, so could you add those findings, please?
Yes, I will definitely add those findings which are sent forth on the October 14 planning commission report at subparagraph B, and those are the required findings.
Commissioner Kane?
Would the maker of the motion consider dividing the motion tres partes? One is the zoning.
Paul is dividing the three parts.
You know that, Tom. That one be the zoning, another be the demo, another be the A&amp;S. Would there be any practicality in that to help us move forward?
Yeah, I, I do think, well-
Well, I'm asking the maker of the motion.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with doing that, but I guess I better understand it better. First, would you explain to me again what you want?
Well, I've heard no objection to the zoning. I've heard compliments on the thought process that went into it. I've heard no objections on the demolition and so maybe these things could progress and I think there's going to be a discussion on the third part.
Well, I think there's going to be a discussion in any event, but, but I have no objection to doing that, although I suppose I might break it in two because as stated by you, apparently there's no, should be no anticipated objection to the first two matters unless Commissioner Erickson has a problem with them. I'm perfectly happy to do it any way my fellow commissioners would like.
I just thought we could make progress and-
No problem, but I'm just saying I think you divided it into two now.
So I believe Commissioner Erickson has a comment and unless he's about to say the same comment as me, I'll follow up with him.
But mine's actually a question which is probably for the town attorney, but could be for Mr. Paulson. So could we, and I was going to ask this before any motion was made, could we introduce a motion, and, and I'm not presuming what the pleasure of the commission is, but let's assume that we were going to forward a recommend, a positive recommendation for the zoning change to the town council. That clearly has to be an action of the town council. An architectural site application is not required, could, is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So is it, but I understand that the zoning change would need to be made in order to allow the architectural site application to go forward. But could we craft a motion, assuming that we could figure out what was right to approve with the architectural site application, you know, if it's what they proposed or some changes we were to make to it? That's not the question for the moment. Where we actually approved, not recommended to the town council, but approved the architectural site action, architectural site application contingent upon the zoning change being adopted? So that, so that the town council would not then hear the architectural site application?
So I think the short answer is yes, that is a possibility. Staff actually explored that possibility, but determined that since the zone change had to move forward to the council anyway, that both applications would move forward. Should the planning commission wish to separate those out and approve it with an additional condition that obviously that this is based on the ultimate decision of the council for the zone change, then unless the town attorney has a different thought, then that would be my opinion.
It is a very unique situation trying to approve a A&amp;S before the zone change is But I believe we can craft those conditions to make certain that there are no vested rights that occur until that zoning occurred.
I was just trying to be friendly to the council and relieve them of some work.
It's very thoughtful of you.
Well, then to the maker of the motion, let's do that. Clearly something's going to go there and it's going, clearly it's going to be an improvement. So let's do the zoning piece and then we have one or two other separate pieces.
I, I will attempt to do that and I'll look forward to comments from my fellow commissioners. But as, as I look to the applica- and I think Commissioner Erickson's point is well-taken, so ultimately I'd like to do that. We'll see if I can. The application summary says we are requesting approval to re, one, rezone the property- from O to R1D, to demolish an existing office building, to construct a new single-family residence, to construct an accessory structure with reduced setbacks, and obtain a grading permit. Now, I don't quite understand how the grading permit fits in here, since we've heard no evidence on the grading permit, so I'd ask count, ask staff on that.
So I would defer to page 10 of your staff report, Subparagraph B, which really splits out the zoning by itself, and has just those three sub-paragraphs that would accomplish the zoning recommendation.
So what does that do with the application summary being for the grading permit? In other words, the grading permit would not be part of the motion?
Correct, that would be part of the architecture and site motion.
All right, but would be part of a motion that we are making this evening, and I'm just asking you, perhaps you can also share with me, where in our report do we discuss the grading permit?
And I will look to the project planner, but the grading permit is, there, it's part of the architecture and site application, but I'll let Ms. Walters.
Yes, it's just a part of the architectural site application. At, at a certain point, if, if an applicant cuts and fills over 50 cubic yards on the site, then they have to apply for a grading permit. Actually, a grading permit is issued through Public Works, but we take it through the architecture and site application first.
Does this indicate that it's going to be more than 50, or not?
Let me, I can look up the numbers.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what it is we're being asked to do, and it's not clear. So, but while you're looking it up, I would like to try to parse the motions now, as Commissioner Erickson has suggested that we consider a motion on the architectural site approval, subject however to the rezoning, which can only occur if, as, and when the council does that. So I would, I would make that motion, I'm gonna make one motion concerning the architectural site approval. But before I do that, because that's the one, I think, which we'll wanna discuss, we can however, I think, make a motion, I would make the motion now, to rezone the property from O to R1D, to demolish the existing office building, to construct a single-family residence without approving the ASA at the moment, and to construct an accessory structure, again, without approving at the moment the ASA part of that, which is the design. And I'm waiting to hear on the, on the grading permit.
Sure, thank you, I have that information. So the cut, total cut for the site is 33 cubic yards, the fill is 19. When you add it together, it is two cubic yard, it's 52 cubic yards, and so our threshold is 50 cubic yards.
Okay, and I take it staff has no objection to that issuance of that grading permit?
None at all.
Okay. So included in the motion then would be for the issuance of the grading permit. Now, what, the only thing I've tried to leave out of this is the architectural site approval, which I think may, everybody may want to discuss. So the first motion, if it's at all clear, I'd be surprised, but it, the first motion I'm, I'm making is as to all those other matters, and the findings for those matters would be the same findings that I previously indicated, including the one brought to my attention by our chair, which I think then would cover the necessary findings.
It does. I don't know which one of us want to jump in on this. So essentially, it's gonna be, my understanding from what we've been saying over here, is there's gonna be one motion specifically for the rezoning, and all you need for the rezoning motion, which we will be, is a recommendation to the council, are these three findings.
Okay.
That is standalone, that doesn't include the demo or anything, that's a simple rezone. The other items are all wrapped into this architectural and site application. So if you wanna go ahead and make a motion...
The question I have, though, and I appreciate that advice...
Thank you.
Is I don't know that we have any problem with demolition, and we don't have a problem with much of anything, I don't think, except the design of the two buildings. The only discussion I've heard is that. So you're telling me, I think, that one could not lump together everything but the design of the two structures?
No.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll follow the chair's helpful suggestion, so that we only need the three findings we previously have identified...
Right.
And the motion does not include anything to do with the architectural site application.
Correct, correct. Commissioner Badami?
I would second that motion.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on the motion that is being made to recommend approval for the rezoning? No? All in favor? Aye. All right, that passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a, the second motion, which relates to the architectural site approval, because this is the one I think people wanna discuss, but it might be helpful to discuss it by making the motion, assuming I can get a second, in that, which case then we could discuss it, amend it, whatever we wanted to do. But the motion that I would make now would be for the approval of the architectural site application, which would include the demolition of the existing building, the construction of a single-family residence, the construction of the accessory structure with reduced setbacks, and I assume the issuance of the grading permit as described to us. The findings there, I think, are the findings which are set forth in the report, which we all have, and those are set forth on page 11, and that's 1 through 5. So hopefully that's enough, at least to start the process moving, so if we can get a second, we could discuss it, if not, we can do something else.
Before we do a second or half discussion, Joel said that there's a change that we need to make in that.
Sure, so on page 11, it references the conditions contained in Exhibit 3, and we have a revised set of conditions to deal with some drainage concerns as Exhibit 19, so let the record reflect, that would be your motion.
Okay.
Yes, you called it to our attention earlier today by email, and we subsequently got it this evening, too. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have a second or continued discussion? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll second it to facilitate the discussion.
All right. And do we have any discussion, or do we wanna take a vote? Commissioner Kane?
I'll say it again, something's going to go on this property, and we can, we have the skill to elongate things for weeks and weeks and months and months, and I, I wanted to see if, from council, why we can't separate out the demo, so that something can start to get done.
Because the grading and demo is part of the A&amp;S, it's part of that application. It's not a separate demolition permit. There might be other issues than we'd worry about if it was just gonna be demolition without a rebuild.
And let me pose the...
So if you, so, I mean, a, a good example of that is if, if you were to grant a demolition and grading permits, and then the rezone didn't happen, and a demolition occurred in grading, do we have other issues that we're concerned about with an empty lot there with nothing built on it, with grading issues or other issues that, you know, that we hadn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look in, because we know a building was going to be built there? And that's why we included in the A&amp;S. It wasn't separated out for this application.
So you've answered my question. There's nothing we can do to facilitate some progress on this project, it's, it's all or nothing.
Right. It has to, you have to get a rezone.
All right.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I would just suggest to my colleague, Commissioner Kane, my reason for separating the two was to allow for the project potentially to go forward faster, because sometimes it's challenging for the staff, for the town manager staff, to get items agendized for the council. This will allow it to be agendized for the council, where even if, and I'm not suggesting we'll do this, even if we are, we were to continue the architectural site application to a, a future meeting tonight, that stays with us and isn't held up by the agendizing for the town council.
I agree with you, that's why I wanted to break it into three parts 20 minutes ago, but I guess we can't.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
The question I have is, if we decide ASA after the council approves, on the split-up, after the council approves the zoning, the ASA is appealable, so I understand it, now that would be appealed to the council. So I just point that out. I, I wouldn't change my agreement with your proposal, but I wanna, the council can be involved in both of these, depending on whether there's an appeal.
So I, I believe that if we were to take apart the A&amp;S application, I think that we all feel fine with the demo and the grading. So I think what we need to do is, we do have a motion and a second, is to discuss within that motion, are there items that perhaps that we would like to add to that? Are we looking for some modifications to the architectural portion? So I would be looking to my fellow commissioners for some thoughts on those particular items. Commissioner Talisfor?
Sure, I'll start. Why not? And by the way, I agree with that bifurcating of the, the motion, I thought that was, thank God we have that in there, because this isn't, if any neighborhood in our town is in transition, this is the one. It's an interesting neighborhood, because some of those office buildings probably will stay for a very long time. But some of them, you don't even know they're there because of all the tree coverage that is there, and it's somehow they, it seems to not bother us, but anyway. But the one thing that you cannot mistake about this neighborhood is its scale. And it is obvious, and it is in conformity to each other, it presents a wonderful harmony on that street. The buildings, I checked, and the scale, the height of the, of all of those homes, the tallest home, well, the shortest home actually, is at 21 feet, and the tallest home is at 26. This structure was, would be coming in at 29, one and a half inches, it would be even taller than the apartment building across the street from it. Now perhaps it wouldn't bother me so much, except that it's on a corner lot. It is the predominant lot in that neighborhood, and it really sets the tone. And what I look at when I see this, besides the complexity of the roof forms, which really add to its mass, which is why I brought that up, if it's, if it's an interpretation of a craftsman, if it's a new transitional track, a current trap, craftsman interpretation, one of the elements of a craftsman that stands out is its gable ends. So what I was trying to get at was that if the roofs could somehow be lowered or made less complex, perhaps we had a chance of not recognizing that this would be the tallest house in the neighborhood, but I can't. And so because of that, I have, I have an issue, and I would like to see that this possibly come back with some exploration of that roof line and bringing it down. And that's why, you know, we have these residential guidelines for something. People worked long and hard on this, and it means a lot to me. So that's my comment for now.
Commissioner Badami?
To add to that, I can't make the finding for the exception to the rear setback on the garage, the accessory structure at 774 square feet. You're required with new construction to bring the building, the application, to current code, and although there might be older homes in the neighborhood that do have a reduced setback, they were built long ago. So I cannot make the finding, the compelling reason, to make an exception on that rear setback for the garage.
Okay, any other comments? I'll share my comments, I agree with my two fellow commissioners. I would like to see some type of reduction in the massing on the corner, hopefully through some of the working on the roof, but mostly is the rear setback with the garage. I'd like to see that revisited and make sure that it does meet the town guidelines. I believe if there's no other comment, though, we do have, okay, Commissioner Erickson?
So I was trying to understand Commissioner Talisfor's concerns. So if, if I look at the chart on page 8 of the staff report, so there are, 1, 2, 3, there are five single-family homes in the, in that chart, of which four are two-story. So does the staff know what the height of those, I mean, what the height of those are? Is there a significant height difference between those four and the proposed height of this one? I mean, we can look at, but I mean, it's, is it, I mean, is it...
About five. About five feet.
Why don't you tell me?
Oh, Exhibit 15 has a streep scape with the dimension, with the dimensions, and this was provided by Studio 3 Design.
Ms. Walters, did you have something on that?
Yes, it's, it's Exhibit 15, and the house, the house that's located on the west side of Monterey Street, number one, shows a 26 feet, 26 feet in height. It does have the same plates, and this, this house is being measured because it's being lowered, so it's, it's very similar to that, that house that's won over.
What's the address?
That's a great question, let me grab that.
It's called 1 on Exhibit 15.
Yeah, I'm working on this chart, the same one he's working on.
Yeah, I know, but if you look at it, you can see it, Exhibit 15.
Here.
I just had to memorize by address, so I...
I don't have them all memorized.
I'm okay, thank you.
Explain that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I follow that. You're saying, not we're staying the height as shown, 29 and a half feet. It is similar to 26, because why?
Sure, so actually I did just find the address. It's, it's 461 Monterey Avenue. That was a remodel of an existing home, and so as the applicant described, is described in the report, they have lowered the foundation to be lower, so they're, they're measuring from a lower elevation than this, this house on 461, but they have the same plate heights.
Is the foundation that they're me, I think you said they're measuring from the foundation?
They're measuring from below, below grade, so at, at the crawl space.
So the 26 feet, you're assuming is being measured from grade?
That's correct.
And the 29 feet is being measured from below grade?
That's correct.
By six inches below grade?
I believe so.
I think that was the testimony.
That's, that's what it said in the report, yep.
Okay, so instead of being 29 and then one and a half inches, I guess, it'd be 28, whatever.
And you can see in the attachment that...
27.
27 and a...
27, 7 and 1/2.
27, 7 and 1/2 from grade.
Okay, so it's roughly a foot and a half higher than 461 Monterey.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions of staff or comments? Otherwise, we do have a motion and a second, so, yes, Commissioner Erickson? I'm sorry, O'Donnell.
Uh, let me just say this, I put this motion out so we can see where we are. If enough of us are not comfortable with this, then I would prefer that we, I mean, I would be happy to withdraw, if I can, to withdraw the motion, because I'm not doing this to, you know, just to lose, it, it, go down in flames or something, but I mean, if, if in fact the majority counts of the commission wants to do something else, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. But so far, I guess I've heard from, I guess two, is it more, three people, three people. So clearly if I heard from one more person, I ought to withdraw the motion, and we ought to do something else.
Commissioner O'Donnell, how are you? No, I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of the, the other concerns.
Okay, so, because I've heard differing views on this, can I withdraw the motion, if I get the second to agree?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so I would like to withdraw the motion, and I think Commissioner Erickson, is the second if he concurs with that.
Do you agree with that, Commissioner Erickson?
An alternative would be to ask fellow commissioners to propose amendments to the motion to address their concerns.
That's true. Let me just say this, I have heard, and I may be wrong, that what I'm hearing is that enough of my fellow commissioners would like a redesign, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how we can prove something's, subject to a redesign until we get a chance to look at the redesign. So I'll ask you once again, and it's up to you.
I don't, I don't have any problem.
Okay, so if that's...
All I hear you, I just, it's not complex, I don't think, at the moment, I think you're asking for a redesign, and that would be that we move to continue this matter to a date certain.
Yes.
Asking the applicant...
Asking the applicant based on what they've heard this evening.
Mm-hmm.
To deal with two issues. One is the bulk and mass, particularly the height, I suppose, of the proposal. Height and mass of the proposal. And secondly, dealing with the garage. And we've heard different things on the garage. Now, obviously, the applicant doesn't have to do anything. This is the request of the, of the planning commission, and whatever the applicant does is up to the applicant. But the motion is simply that we continue this to a date certain, and I'll ask for some directions on a date certain, so that the applicant, after having heard the discussion this evening, can decide whether the applicant wishes to resubmit to address some of those issues, or some or all those issues. So that would be the motion.
All right. We have a second for the motion. Commissioner Kane?
Question first.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, if we give guidance on the redesign and a date certain, Mr. Paulson, how would that affect appeal rights? Would that slow the process down? Can they go forward and, and request an appeal? What would happen?
There are no appeal rights because you haven't taken an action.
So I'll second your motion and see what happens.
Let me say this. The reason I think it's important that we do it, one of the reasons the planning commission exists is to deal with these kinds of issues. It is true that under many circumstances, the final decision is in the hands of the council. But I think we ought to do our work. And our work is, very frankly, I would have approved this this evening. So we have a wide variety of opinions. But it's clear to me that we have at least four people who are not happy with this, with this. And I think therefore, the motion will help everybody. And if at the end of the day, they submit something which we still don't like, then I think you're probably right. We should just send it along.
So I, I still second the motion. And we look for a date certain if we get the vote.
Right. Commissioner Erickson, and then I, yeah.
So I'm trying, I'm fine with us continuing and can support the motion. I think we need to be clear about the direction that we're giving to the applicant and fairness to them. So I heard two different concerns with the garage, and I don't have a, one was the size of the garage and the reduced setback, which are, which are not related to each other. They're two separate issues. So if I were the applicant, I wouldn't know which of those we were not moving forward on the basis of the garage. The other issue, I think, is the perception and some members of the, by some members of the commission, that it's out of scale in the neighborhood. That's a summary of it. But, so I don't know if those are, if that's a, an accurate articulation of the concerns because they can't redesign if they don't know what the direction is.
Could I, could I just say that I think that is accurate? But I do think the setback does influence the size of the garage. Because unless you move the garage, if you reduce, if you increase the setback from three to five feet, you're going to impact the wrong size of the garage. I don't like impacting the width. That doesn't make any sense to me. But they are, they are connected insofar as if you reduce the three, or if you increase the three to five, you're either going to take it away from the, the size of the garage as proposed, or you're going to move the garage. Either one can do. But I'm just saying, they conceptually are related. I don't know that it's worth our while to sit here tonight and go through precisely, I mean, fairly clear to me, there's a number of people who think the garage is too big, period. There are some, and I don't know how many. I know that one of my fellow commissioners is particularly concerned, in addition to that, with the setback. But I don't know that it's worthwhile to poll that. So I, I would like to stay with the same motion. And I personally, if I were sitting in the, in the chair of the, of the applicant, there's a lot of direction here. It may not be direction they want to take, and it may not be direction they need to take, but it is direction.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So we need to determine a date certain. So if there's no more discussion, I'm going to open the public portion of the hearing again to ask the applicant that, based on this, as we look at dates, to determine a date together that would work. Mr. Paulson, knowing...
So November 11th would be the first opportunity. So I would just look to the applicant to see if they're, believe they're able to make those changes by the 11th. And should they not be able to make those changes by the 11th, then we would just continue it again. But the 11th would be the soonest opportunity.
We have a 28.
No.
Okay. All right. So the 11th. All right. We're going to reclose the public portion then. And so we have a motion, we have a date certain, that the item will be continued to November 11th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, I, since we did have a two-part motion here, one was referring approval, and then the continuance, there's no appeal rights to this item.
Correct.
So I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, do we want to take a very quick break right now before we move into the next item and then come back to them? All right. We're going to take a very quick break, everyone. All right. We are now reopening the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, October 14th. We are now considering, we are now considering item number three. A conditional use permit application U-15-005, requesting approval to operate a formula retail store, Blue Mercury, on property zone C-2LHP. This is APN number 510-44-077. Are there any disclosures from anyone on this item? And has everyone had an opportunity to visit the site? Great. All right. Ms. Puga, I understand you're giving us our report this evening.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant, Blue Mercury, is requesting to operate a formula retail business with a ancillary spa service on property zone C2. The town code requires a conditional use permit for a formula retail use of any size in the C2 zoning district. The 1,044-square-foot tenant space is located on the west side of North Santa Cruz Avenue, approximately 140 feet north of West Main Street. Previous tenants of the space have included Peabody Fine Art Gallery, and most recently, Wink and Willow, a women's clothing retail store. The proposed business would occupy a space not previously occupied by a formula retail use and would result in the 10th formula retail business located within the sub-area of the map located, pardon me, attached as Exhibit 7 in your report tonight. The majority of the tenant space is proposed to be dedicated as retail space with makeup, hair, skincare, and fragrance products. Approximately 72 square feet in the rear of the tenant space is proposed as a spa for facials, waxing, and microdermabrasion. The spa operating hours are proposed to be the same as the retail operation. Conditions of approval have been recommended by staff regarding the proposed use, the number of spa employees, and stations. There is one desk guide memo for you this evening, which contains a letter from the property owner. That was in response to a public comment received from a neighboring downtown tenant, and that was attached as Exhibit 8 of your document this evening. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff? Ms. Johansson?
I know there was a summary of the immediate surrounding uses in the area, but I wondered if there were any other retailers that sold makeup, you know, or skin products, other than the spas that are, like, for instance, the spa in LaScotus sells it as an ancillary business to them.
So located within the sub-area B, there is one other makeup retailer, and that's Benefit.
I thought I saw that in the comments, but I wasn't, I wanted to make sure. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? No? Thank you. I suppose the applicant. I have one card. I didn't have an applicant name, so I'm, is the applicant Cleary Groan? Okay. Great. So we're calling the applicant for this item up. You will have 10 minutes to address the commission. Please make sure you state your name for the record and pull the microphone close so we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Cleary Groan. I'm the vice president of real estate and construction at Blue Mercury. We're the nation's leading luxury beauty products and spa retailer. In 1999, cosmetics could only be purchased at drugstores and department stores. The husband-and-wife team of Barry and Marla Beck opened the first Blue Mercury 16 years ago in Georgetown, Washington, DC. And it was quickly recognized as the friendly neighborhood store for beauty where clients could find high-quality, innovative beauty products and honest expert advice. To this day, they are intently and intimately involved in, in the business on a daily basis, so much so that they call it a mom-and-pop operation. Today, Blue Mercury is widely recognized nationwide. We offer the world's most innovative beauty products in a truly unique shopping experience. Blue Mercury clients receive unparalleled technical product knowledge, expert advice, and friendly service. Our teams would rather have clients leave the store with handfuls of samples so that they can be sure to return and find products that work for them, as opposed to ever buying anything that is less than 100% right. Every day, we take hundreds of questions about skincare and makeup concerns and challenges, and our expert associates are always eager to provide the best possible attention to our clients. With respect to our merchandising, we will carry brands that are not sold in LaScotus. Our diversified product and brand assortment will greatly differentiate us from other retailers in the market, thereby adding value and uniqueness to the downtown shopping district. As you can see on this slide here, we demonstrate and show some of the makeup, beauty, hair, and fragrance products that we sell that are currently not represented by any of the ancillary pieces of business operated by spas and salons downtown, or of our neighbor just down the street, Benefit. Here's also some examples of skincare brands that we sell nationwide and also would sell at our LaScotus location. We will drive more traffic to the street as there will be less need for women to leave the downtown community and go to the nearest mall to get their cosmetics. Everyone wins when we enter a market, the customer and all other merchants, as the town begins to get a more captive audience. Virtually all women are shopping for cosmetics and skincare. The question is, if they cannot find these products in LaScotus, where do they go? They go somewhere else, and while they're there, they are likely buying other goods and services outside of town as well. We bring the brands found in department stores like Neiman Marcus and Nordstrom right to your neighborhood in a friendly, small neighborhood environment with high service and advice, especially in makeup and skincare. Most towns seek out Blue Mercury for this reason, as we become an important part of the town fabric and support an effort to keep neighbors from having to leave to purchase the higher-quality brands at venues outside of the community. We're quite proud of our store design and have been profiled in numerous national publications highlighting our brand and interior aesthetic. Here are some slides that showcase the attention to detail with our finishes and fixturing, always keeping the customer at the forefront of our design ideas. Therefore, we believe our concept will be complementary to the other businesses in LaScotus and add value to the shopping experience of the consumer. We have an active marketing program that involves social media and other programs that are community-driven. We will participate in all of the local activities and partner with businesses downtown to drive more success for all and a sense of community as we have in all of our other locations. Here are some examples of the types of grand opening, consumer events, and social media that we utilize to create excitement and engagement. Blue Mercury's innovative retailing model has been written up in Ink Magazine, as well as The Wall Street Journal, USA Today, and has been the topic of numerous books, including Shopping: Why We Love It and How Retailers Can Create the Ultimate Consumer Experience and Be Happy at Work: 100 Women Who Love Their Jobs and Why. The future of Blue Mercury is a continuation of our initial goals, bringing the best personal care products in the world and expert advice to every individual in an informative manner. We welcome this conditional use permit process as it maintains the integrity and culture of downtown LaScotus. It is common for other neighboring businesses to thrive due to our loyal following and traffic that is drawn to our locations. We've solicited feedback from numerous business owners downtown, and everyone had extremely positive feedback about Blue Mercury's arrival. We look forward to being a part of the LaScotus community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Hanson, and Commissioner Talisfor?
When I started looking at this, I, I thought it sounded very exciting, and, and I probably still do. We actually own, my husband and I own rental property in Georgetown. And although I haven't been in the Blue Mercury store, I know where it is, and it's a very tony part of Georgetown. And, and, you know, I think that's the, you know, a good place. And I've seen other places you are at, and it, it seems to make sense for LaScotus. Something that, that I read earlier today, though, I wanted to ask about, was that, that the company had been purchased by Macy's in 2015. And if I read correctly, that deal has actually gone through. And so I, I wondered, there were some comments from Macy's executives in the article saying things like, you know, having Blue Mercury in their stores, maybe even like Blue Mercury departments. And so then it changed, it changes the nature of the business. And, and I wondered if you could just comment on that?
Sure.
How that works out with your retail stores and, and what you're doing with Macy's.
Sure. Yeah, it's a great question. So the company was purchased by Macy's and closed in March of 2015. And the relationship between the two companies is that we are, in fact, a wholly-owned subsidiary, but we are, the founders are still intimately involved. I report directly to the husband, the COO, and his wife is, is still the CEO. And I can tell you from personal experience on my, on a day-to-day basis, that they are extremely involved in, in the, the operation and strategy of the company. As far as the future plans that we have with them, there, there are certainly talks that, about us testing stores inside of stores, which is something that has been done with other retailers in the past, whether it's Sunglass Hut having stores inside of Macy's, or Sephora, as an example, having departments inside of, inside of JCPenney department stores. We do not have any of those open or operating as of yet.
And I would presume, too, that, that you would have to figure out if that makes sense from a market, market perspective, you know, diluting your share... from a market perspective, you know, diluting your share as well. But I did wonder about that, you know, because there's a couple of Macy's around here.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the spa. Oh, and a little point I wanted to make. You said that you, that Blue Mercury sells products that are not available in this town. And I have to let you know that there are two products that I know of that are sold in town. So you may not want to, you may want to couch that a little bit. It's, one is Orbe, and then there's Bumble and Bumble. And it's the hair products that are sold. And I'm not sure about, sometimes I sometimes see the skin sedicals. So I just, you know, may not, you, most of your products are probably not sold here, though. Okay, so, but moving on, what I wanted to ask was about your ancillary spa room. And I wanted to know what products you use in that room?
What do you mean, as far as what products?
The products that will be used on the woman that comes in to say, or a man, I guess, who would like to have a treatment. What products will, will you be using the, okay, here's the question. Will you be using the products only that are in your store, or will you have other products?
The products that are in our store.
So is it more of a demonstration of those products?
No, we do minor spa treatments such as facials, microderm abrasion, et cetera. It constitutes about 5% of our revenue, so it is truly ancillary. And we employ the service of one esthetician. So we're generally not a parking-intensive use whatsoever because it is such a small component of our.
And so is your, that's leading into another question I had. Is your esthetician, is that someone that's employed by the store?
Correct.
Or is that contracted?
Employed by the store.
So that's.
They're a Blue Mercury employee.
Employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for now.
All right, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
You mentioned a business model concerning store inside of store for Blue Mercury inside of Macy's. Would Macy's show up inside of Blue Mercury?
No.
There's language in the material that we've received suggesting or underscoring employment four to five people from the community. Is it the business model to recruit from the town that you're in? Or what did you mean by that, you know, enticing phrase, "from the community"?
Well, our model is built on employing people within the community because generally, the people that live within particular towns, whether it's Summit, New Jersey, or Georgetown, or whatever, have relationships with women with whom they've done business before at other places of employment. And so it is our primary goal when seeking associates for our new locations to recruit from within the community because, as I had mentioned with regard to our community involvement, it's an integral part of our model and being a component of the fabric within the environment that we operate.
That wasn't one of my questions, but since you said it, tell me about your community involvement. We sometimes have issues that are admissible, inadmissible regarding the community involvement of Formula Retail when they say, "Well, we have to call Hong Kong for permission to give you five hours for your baseball team." What do you mean by community involvement?
So we do operate in a very localized platform whereby the manager of a particular location has budget and authority and autonomy to make those decisions unilaterally without calling someone from corporate to approve or otherwise disapprove that type of request. And you can see a couple of examples, particularly the one on the right. You know, this was, we have one store in Minnesota. It's in Adina, which is a very affluent community like LaScotus. And that manager took it upon herself to become involved with the Junior League and printed up these invitations to their clients and sent them out and passed them in shopping bags when clients came into the store. And so that's a good example, to address your question of the community involvement and the autonomy that managers have to make those decisions themselves.
So the literature regarding community involvement and engaging local employees gives a warm and fuzzy feeling extending to you said mom-and-pop. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Beck aren't going to move to LaScotus and operate this, are they?
No.
So operated by husband-and-wife team, owned by Macy's there in Washington DC, I guess, most of the time. You have 60 to 70-something stores?
Correct.
So the mom-and-pop feeling is left to whomever the local manager is that you retain?
Yeah, correct. The intent is that we hire locally. Every manager is interviewed personally by the CEO, Marla Beck, something that she wears on her sleeves very proudly and broadcasts loudly as well. And it's important that the people that we hire, as I mentioned earlier, are local because they're the ones that are going to have relationships with women in the community and are going to be able to make our business as successful as possible.
Everybody talks about women in the community, and everybody's like, "You're going to have Old Spice in there, or lava soap, or..."
There is some, there is some men's product, believe it or not, that's actually good, I think.
So they'll let me in?
They let you in, sure.
My last question, which is legitimate. In gross revenue terms, can you differentiate between the front and the back? Can you differentiate between the products' gross revenue percent and the spa?
Yes.
I don't know if the town has a definition for spa, but it's about this wide or it's that small. What would your two gross revenues be from products versus spa services?
Good question. Skincare is about 48% of our business. Makeup, cosmetics, is 46% of our business. And spa is 5% to 6%.
Let me add that up. No, thank you. I have the general point.
Sure.
All right, do we have any other questions? No, thank you. So I have one card for Patty Rice. Make sure you pull the microphone close to you and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Patty Rice. I'm the operating owner of the Spa LaScotus, located at 100 South Santa Cruz Avenue. In the 16 years that we've been in business, I have seen a lot of controversy in the downtown corridor about personal services. And there was a moratorium way back when, and now the conditional use permit. I just wanted to caution you in making this decision because I understand the benefits right next door that specializes in makeup. But if you do a quick Google search or look on Yelp, there's like 24 other skincare providers in the downtown area, nearby on Main Street, North Santa Cruz, South Santa Cruz. Most of them are single operators, single room, in the back of a salon, or they rent independently from another space. All of them sell skincare. And so there is a competitive factor there that should be considered.
That's it. Any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I actually was going to ask the question of the applicant, but I forgot. But had they contacted you? Because I thought about the distance between the Conada Building and where the Spa LaScotus is. Did the applicant contact you relative to coming into the town?
Any other questions? Commissioner Talasfor?
Ms. Rice, I hate to put you on the spot, but if the applicant had contacted you, may I ask how you might respond? And if I'm putting you on the spot and you care not to, that's fine.
Yeah, it looks like a lovely store. The national brands are a nice addition because we don't have a lot of those brands, I think, in LaScotus. But it's the skincare and the personal services. And my other personal worry is that when you put a spa service in a spa like that, it can morph into a bigger spa space. And I don't think downtown needs that.
Okay, thank you very much. That was good.
Any other questions? No, thank you. At this time, we normally do give the applicant an additional five minutes to respond to anything that they heard from the public. If you would like to have that time, you do have five minutes if you would like.
I think the only thing I would mention in response to the skincare and spa, we certainly want to be good partners with every single other retailer, national or otherwise, in a community. And I think the skincare and cosmetics component of the other businesses downtown is generally ancillary, except for Benefit. And again, based on the design of our location, the size of our location, the design of a store, we're limited to one very small makeup room and have no intentions of ever growing that business to be larger than it is because it is extremely small on a percentage basis as it stands today. And like I told Commissioner Kane in response to his question, 95%, 6% of our revenue is from skincare and cosmetics, not from the spa services that we provide. That's all, thank you.
Great, don't leave. Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Hanson.
So hypothetical question of sorts, because I don't know if it's within our purview to even suggest it, but if you, given that it's, whether it's a loss leader or a draw-in, if you had to, could you live without the spa?
It's generally not our preference. We feel like the spa adds to the ambiance and aesthetic of the brand, and it is something that we strongly desire to have in every location. Candidly, we don't have it in every location for one reason or another. Sometimes it's space constraints. We make so much more money with the skincare and cosmetics than we do the spa that we are forced to do without. So it is our strong preference to have it, if at all possible, in every location, but we don't have it in every location.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Talasfor?
I have a question for the applicant, and then I guess I have a question for staff, but save that for later. Do you have any locations nationwide where the model of the percentage of the business deviates from what you told us?
Not drastically, not where the spa is, you know, significant double-digit piece of our business, no. The general range of that component of our business is as low as 3% to as high as like 8%, but that's about it. It's a pretty tight range.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. As a follow-up to the spa, I was wondering and thinking, spa is such, is sometimes a hot-button word, especially in our little town where we're looking to protect some, and, you know. So my question is, would you, because this is more of a demonstration room for your product, is what you said, because the products that you use in the room are reflective of what you're selling, correct?
Well, correct. We are doing a service there, too.
But the service is actually in demonstration of the product?
It can be, yes. But if we're doing a facial or microderm abrasion, it's probably, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to mislead the commission to say that it is a quote-unquote "makeup room."
I didn't say that. It's a room that you would demonstrate a product, be it microderm abrasion, a facial, applying makeup, waxing. I mean, it could be, but the product would be from your store?
Correct.
So I'm trying to figure out if, and I don't know if we could even come up with something, and we can discuss this later, if, but the word spa seems to trigger something. Would you be willing to change that to a treatment room? I mean, spa has that, I know you advertise it as spa, so it's just a question.
We're open to it. There, the word spa is reflected in signage within the interior of the locations that we operate at the very back where the room is located, to advertise to the consumer that we do offer those products and services.
Okay. That's fine. And then I also wanted to ask you if you're, how do you, how do you, what's your product placement in the windows? Or do you put product placement in the windows?
We generally don't put product placement in the windows because of sunlight can affect the consistency and change the tint of boxes and things of that nature.
I certainly understand that. So what would you put in the windows, or would you?
Generally, you know, it depends. In this location, we'd probably leave them open so they could see into the store.
Okay, right.
In some of the larger width storefronts that we have across the country, this one's very narrow gym, it's 18, 19 feet. So we don't have a lot of storefront width to do much. But in larger ones, we do banners, but that's not going to be the case here.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
I heard microderm abrasion come trippingly off the tongue. I'd, this male product that you have, can you do a microderm abra? Can you do a microderm abrasion on me and make me beautiful?
I think we could do it. I think we could do probably anything you would like.
All right. Do we have any other legitimate questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. I will close the public portion of this item and ask if anyone has any questions of staff, motion, Commissioner Erickson?
So we have the privilege of having the Economic Vitality Manager of the town present with us, actually for another item. I would be interested if she has comments about some of the issues that were brought up. The applicant suggested that this would have a multiplier effect, would bring people into, and there were also issues into the downtown area. And we had public testimony about competition for products and then concern expressed about the use of the word spa. Or, and I guess I'm not concerned about what word is used because, you know, a rose is still a rose, even if you call it a petunia. So about another quote spa service. So do you, you are paid to give us wisdom on those kinds of things. So do you have some wisdom to share with us?
Well, I will say that other merchants have reported that in times that are difficult, for example, the most recent recession, it was many of those anchor or national brands that would bring people in, and then they would stay and shop. There's very few people who come downtown for one purpose and then leave. Of course, if you have a business lunch, or you're just running in to grab something, that would happen. But typically, the experience is you come downtown, and then we want you to stay. And that's why we, you know, work to keep that balance. So we've seen that through this conditional use permit process and really vetting each person that comes in and kind of where they are, that they can provide a great deal of strength, really, to the downtown and provide that vitality and kind of that flow. As far as the semantics of spa, treatment room, you know, I think when you work in that industry, it's almost interchangeable. A spa has treatment rooms, so while it is a spa, you may be in treatment room A, or B, or C. So they're almost the same thing. I don't think that that is going to make or break, you know, any business around or make or break this business. I think that it's really just looking at what they're presenting to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, and then Commissioner Kane?
So I, you know, in reading through it and after hearing the comments, I'm generally in favor of this, and it seems to have a lot of support from most of the other businesses, not all. I didn't see any conditions of approval for the COP, but I, maybe I just missed the page that it was on.
There in Exhibit 3?
Exhibit 3, okay. I was flipping through, trying to remember. Well, my, so my specific question was that was there a limitation? Thank you. There should be no more than one employee for the spa. That's what I was looking for. And it's already in there, thank you.
Yeah, so Jocelyn can elaborate, but there's kind of three. It's the, kind of says specifically what the spa services that are allowed. It's the, kind of says specifically what the spa services that are allowed, then the number of spa employees, and only one station, and then the maximum spa area is 72 square feet. So we tried to be pretty specific there.
I remembered seeing it, and then I was trying to find it while we were talking. So I would be prepared to make a motion if.
Well, you beat me to it.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Do you want to ask a question?
Would that be okay?
And then we can come back to the motion. How about we do that? Okay?
Either way, I suppose, but one, we talk about a CUP going with the land, and the question is naive, but it needs to be asked. Are we in any way providing a CUP to Macy's?
No, we're not, but if they could operate under these specific parameters, then a different business could go in there, whether that's Macy's or anybody else.
And so in the future, it stays the way it is? Do we have any language, Mr. Paulson, that addresses, because we're talking about it indirectly, do we have any language that actually addresses competition? That we shall have no more than this, or no more than that, or will be sensitive to putting two shoe stores next to each other?
I would defer to Ms. Wren. I don't think we have any specific language that speaks to that. I'm sure there's general language in the general plan that talks about.
Density of similarity, or?
There's nothing from even a density perspective, but it's providing a vibrant mix of different businesses, and so I defer to Ms. Wren.
And we actually brought this up at the last council meeting because there's always, for quite a while, there's been the thought that we have a balance of 80% independent, 20% formula, and that they can't be the same type, and none of that is actually in the town code. It just says that anybody who fits this definition of formula retail must get a conditional use permit, so there's no word that regulates that.
Thank you. One final question, or, yes, it's a question. When we have formula retail, or perhaps even any sort of a commercial application, would it be inappropriate for staff to provide us with a website? Because we didn't get a website with this one, but it sounds like three or four of us went out there, because there's no reference in here made to Macy's and that kind of consideration. I remember American Apparel some years ago, and getting to the website was very helpful in reviewing the case. Is that something we're not supposed to do, or can you provide us in the, as a line item in the future?
Sure, we can provide you a website. Now, we're not going to research as deeply as some people may, we might just give you Blue Mercury, which is probably not going to tell you anything about Macy's, so.
Actually, it did.
But we can give you the straight website.
Okay. Thank you.
It didn't. She, yeah, did not.
Actually, I found the Macy's with a Google search, so.
Right, so Google's different. We will give you the Blue Mercury site in this case, but we're not going to be giving you the Google search results.
The Macy's came through Wikipedia. Anyway, so, okay, so I did research. But, can I have a question?
Yes.
Of staff, sorry. So my question is, regarding this CUP and the use of this word spa, I'm wondering about going forward if Blue Mercury, I'm not sure what the vote's going to be tonight, but if they were voted, you know, approved, and then in five years decided to leave, what are we exposed to with the spa room?
Anyone could go in if they could comply with these conditions of approval and operate under these conditions and operate their business.
So then my question is, is there a way for us to condition that it is only with this particular business?
Wow.
This way it is with every CUP.
Is there, what else, is there a, what could be?
So through the process that we have right now, no, you can't. CUPs run with the land. Council is looking with this in formula retails and maybe trying to tighten it up through what is called an operational agreement, which will make it even more difficult to transfer that. But the idea is, is if you have a CUP, you've vested your right, and if you can meet the conditions, then you can do that.
Well.
You couldn't, you couldn't change it, so I think the, can Macy's come in here and start selling clothes? No.
So that's, I guess that was my whole point about the term spa treatment room or something. If it was, if we could term this something else, we wouldn't have to worry about it. But maybe they'll never leave and it won't ever be an issue, so, but it's, it is a concern of mine.
Commissioner Badami?
I would just like to point out that I'm comfortable with the fact that with the square footage that's allocated to that retail space, only 72 square feet would be allowed. So if the business didn't thrive and somebody else came in, they would be limited to just 72 square feet for that spa service, so I'm comfortable with that.
Perhaps I'm comfortable as well, because reviewing this, if it's specifically for facials, peels, waxing, and microdermations, and makeup applications.
Okay. Staff has made it very specific, yes. Commissioner Hanson?
So if, I would like to go ahead and make the motion then that we approve conditional use permit application U-15-005, requesting approval to operate a formula retail store Blue Mercury on property zone C-2 LHP, APN number 510-44-077, with the conditions attached in the, in Exhibit 3.
Commissioner Badami?
I'd like to second the motion, but I would also like to add that it would contribute to the retail mix at the southern end of North Santa Cruz Ave, and I believe it would enhance the existing retail businesses, and that the town currently does not have a formula, or, I'm sorry, a limit on formula stores, it's getting late, and that Blue Mercury has a minimal presence in California and offers a unique shopping experience.
All right. Commissioner Talasfor?
And I would, one of the reasons I really supported this was because what they do offer is not in town, and it's not even close to town, so this will be a draw, and I think that the testimony we had tonight from Ms. Rice also helped to, you know, have this approved.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, you're, you're correct. The secondor did want to, did you want to add those comments to the motion?
I wanted to add those comments to the motion, just.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that, because I neglected to state endings and that included that concept. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Are there any appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
We are now on to item number four. Town Code Amendment A-15-003, a public hearing to consider adoption of amendments to Section 29 dot 10 point 145 of Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the town code, allowing businesses to charge for valet parking services within private parking lots. Ms. Lampros? No, sorry. I don't know why I wrote a wrong name now, didn't I?
Oh, it's both of us were here. I'm just going to start with the opening comments.
Okay, thank you.
So before you tonight is the draft ordinance to allow businesses to begin charging for the valet service in their private lots. This amendment was drafted at the request of the council, given the requests that they've been receiving from business owners. Currently, valet is allowed to be offered in private lots, but it may not be for a higher fee than the town charges, which is currently nothing. The suggested amendments would still require a parking lot permit to be obtained and would allow for the property and/or business owner to work with a commercially licensed valet vendor to obtain the permit. Upon approval and issuance, they could then charge for that service. Staff did quite a bit of benchmarking with similar ordinances in other jurisdictions, and we prepared that draft language in your report to include several of those provisions that must be met by all the stakeholders. And we want to draw your attention particularly to, depending on who the applicant is, that the property owner, the business owner, and any other business that shares that lot be in agreeance to the, to the application for the permit. We also found that there were no other jurisdictions in our benchmarking that did not allow their businesses to charge. The town recognizes the value of valet because it increases the availability of parking without increasing the physical real estate for parking spaces, and in fact, offer our own valet service during the holiday peak hours, and again, that's offered complimentary. This concludes our report, and both Lynn Lampros and I, and then members from the town attorney's office and planning are here to answer your questions tonight.
All right. Commissioner Badami?
Can you provide the examples of the neighboring communities that you surveyed that have a similar draft ordinance? Because I haven't seen any around here.
Good evening, commissioners. Campbell does not have one. They have no.
Can I ask you to get a little closer to the microphone?
Sure, sorry. They have no valet parking on the books, but Saratoga, San Jose, Palo Alto, San Mateo are communities in the area that do, specifically with regard to Saratoga and San Jose's, as they're close. They allow valet parking with no comment as to charge or no charge, so they are not tying it to any one business, and they are not offering it for free at the expense of the city. They are letting the vendor come in, provide the service, and charge for it.
I have one more question, if I may, Madam Chair, and this is probably for Monica Wren. What is the cost to operate the valet service in December for lot number four? So we know what the businesses are looking at cost-wise, if they can turn a profit in doing this, can you give us an idea?
Sure. We do a not-to-exceed agreement of, I believe it's roughly $24,000, and we do that as a not-to-exceed because there are some days where, for example, two years ago, it was like 30 degrees at night, and we found that people weren't out there, so we would stop the valet service, and we only pay for what we have. So we don't exceed that amount, and oftentimes, it's closer to the $18,000 mark. But again, that's from Thanksgiving through Christmas Eve, so it's about a month, and it's offered about three to four days a week, depending on the closer you get to the holidays.
Thank you. Okay. You had something you wanted to add?
I'll point out one of the major differences between the ordinances that we looked at, and we didn't just look in this area, looked at some even within the state and even out of the state to come up with some of this language. The one issue that we did not address that there is in a lot of them that you'll find in Saratoga and the other cities, they actually allow the valet stand to be in the right-of-way, to be in the street, to allow you to pull up out in front. We, at this time, felt like we didn't, we weren't ready to go to that level yet, because we're certainly not sure about the secondary effects or that could occur. But I just want to point out to you, if you look at most of those ordinances, they also not only allow it, you know, on their site, but also would allow it in the right-of-way.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. I'm not sure who this would be addressed to, but, so I was expecting in the staff report that we would have a list of the possible parking lots, and I don't see that, and it makes it really difficult to make an informed decision without knowing that. That's one question I have. And then the other question is, how will this affect the parking assessment district? How will these be counted? Or how will they not be counted? And then I have a third question, I'll just throw it out there, and that is, how was this idea brought to us? Was it brought to us by a business owner, or was this just something that the council thought of? I mean, I don't know.
So I'll address two of those questions, and I'm going to bounce the parking assessment district over to Joel, because he has better history on that. So the council asked for this because of requests from specific businesses in the community, two of which that I know of would be the Holtz Restaurant on Highway 9, and then Diodeca has also requested to do this. We do have a map of the parking assessment district that we can put up on the screen for you. The reason why we don't have a list of parking lots is because this is a very staff-intensive thing to do, and what we have found is that some places have three spots on their property, and some places have 23 spots on their property. So what we would do is we would look to those permit applications when they came in, through the DRC and vet out, you know, is this a space that would even work? Would it be something that causes some sort of blockage of public right-of-way or causes any other concern?
With the Holtz application, I think that's one to kind of look at, what they were thinking there is, they would actually have the valet in their parking lot, but their parking lot would still be used at Holtz for people to pull in and not use valet if they didn't want it to, and if you wanted valet, then you'd go across the street and park at the parking lot. So they had a shared agreement for the valet cars, so they weren't losing any parking whatsoever for their, for their restaurant, but it would provide an extra service if someone wanted to park at Holtz. So that's, that's that application. I'm not sure how Diodeco was going to do theirs, I'm not familiar with that application.
So can you remind me where Holtz parking lot is? I'm going to assume it's the adjacent, is it adjacent to the building?
Yes.
It's not adjacent behind the building?
South side.
It's to the side.
South side of the building.
South side. Okay. I just wanted to be, I mean, these are things that I think we need to know.
But that, but that application, when it came in, as Monica mentioned, would, it would have to show that it could, it could work from a fire standpoint, a handicap standpoint, and that it wasn't going to impact the parking spaces that were already designated under the assessment district. I think theirs is probably, one of the best scenarios is if a business can find a shared parking agreement at night, and this was a bank that's not using it, that allows them not only to fill their parking lot up with cars, but also to valet extra parking spaces instead of spilling out in the neighborhoods.
So then, what, may I just ask, what, who owns the parking lot behind Holtz and between, between Chin Chin and Holtz?
That's a, that's a.
Town lot.
Town lot.
Town lot, thank you.
And he wouldn't be able to valet cars in there.
Right, I know that. Thank you.
All right. I saw Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Kane, and then you.
I had a question about, well, you answered part of my question about the council having interest in this. You know, I used to sit on the Transportation and Parking Commission for a few years, and I know that we had heard a proposal from some merchants that were around the high school to do similar because of the parking problems at the high school, so I generally think this is a great idea. I wondered if the Transportation and Parking Commission has seen this?
They have not seen this specifically.
Okay. Is there a reason why they wouldn't have seen this? You know, because they're supposed to be making recommendations to council on things to do? I just was curious.
There's no specific reason why, it was just a work item that came from the council. I would imagine that they're in the loop on it, but I can't guarantee that that has been brought to them.
Okay. And then the, the other thing I was wondering was, I like the idea of the permit process. Is there a time limit to the permit? Because supposing that things didn't go the way we hoped that they would, I wondered if you gave them a permit to do it, it should have a end date to it, so that if we needed to change something, that you could.
That's certainly language that you could draft. You know, there's the question of, does it run, you know, with just the operator? Do we do a yearly, you know, you have to renew it every year? We would require full indemnification and insurance and all of that, so that would have to be updated every year anyways, so we could certainly do some sort of review process.
A year seemed like a good, at least initially, while this is new, it seemed like a good idea to me, so. I don't know if the other rest of the commission will agree, but.
Commissioner Kane?
I wanted to share two personal experiences. One is Saratoga. I'd been going over to Saratoga to a restaurant a long time ago, and I knew where to park. I knew where to park behind the main street, and what was annoying is when they got valet parking, there were chains across all of those parking places. So I would, I don't see it in writing in here, but because we don't have that map, I can't, you know, anticipate a specific complaint, but I'd be real sensitive to exactly where you're going to put up those chains and where you're going to have the valet parkings, as that can turn people off and ruin the evening before it starts. Second consideration is complicated. But when I did valet parking, as a valet parker, we spent a lot of time trying to make change. We spent a lot of time trying to deal with monetary, what we haven't regulated, maybe we shouldn't, but I think it would make life simple if we retained the can charge no more than the town, which right now is zero, to a reasonable and customary number of can charge no more than the town, and the town charged 10 bucks, or 15 bucks, or whatever the real number is, but keep it round, 10, 20, 5, so the exchanges are quick, a lot of people don't carry cash, but they can anticipate how much they're going to need if we have one simple number, and that number can be determined by people who know what that number should be, and there also should be a policy of no tipping, because that complicates And there also should be a policy of no tipping, because that complicates and extends the exchange. I'm looking at Pony Express where it, in and out, move, 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 and the guy's going to run and bring back the car, and they ought to get 10 bucks, or 20, whatever the right number is. And I would defer to anybody who's got a better idea, but I think we ought to have a number. I think it ought to be a round number. I don't think it should cost the business money to run this operation, but I don't think they should be making a $1.98 profit on it. Figure out what a round number is, so that I know, if I'm coming to town for dinner, I need an extra 10 bucks, and I'll keep it in my shirt pocket. Make the exchange quick. I don't mean to be micromanaging, but answer those, you know, answer those questions for the consumer before he or she even gets there. And then, they know what to do, they hand over 10 or 20, there's no tipping awkwardness. Keep it simple. Thank you.
I can certainly address your first question about the chains. Those would be things that we could address in the parking lot permit. So, if there were concerns about a thoroughfare, or if there was, for example, looking at Holtz, a lot of people will pull into Holtz and then pull into the muni lot from there. If they requested a chain, that's certainly something the DRC could consider at that parking permit level. I didn't know that that was a question.
And the second one about the monetary. Have you considered, would you consider, should you consider?
I mean, I think that would be up for the council, the Planning Commission and the council, to consider. I think market rates are going to vary, and if you put a rate in the code, it could become a challenge based on, you know, we have a parking garage that we're looking at now, and there's a lot of variables in there. So, I don't know how exactly that would work, but that's certainly your ability to make that recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
So, we actually have a card from the public that I... So, I called on a couple of people. I saw raise hands before I got it, so I'm actually going to call them up. Okay. So, Brayton Gosling, I hope I said your name right?
Yes.
When you got, make sure you pull the microphone close. State your name. You've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brayton Gosling. I'm the current hotel manager over at Hotel Los Gatos. I've been with the hotel for about six years, so I've seen our fair share of parking over the course of the time. At our hotel, we have 72 guest rooms and only 101 parking spots. So, valet is necessary for us in the evening, particularly with Diodeca on property. It's a very popular restaurant in the area, as well as, they also do events constantly on property, which is great. So, it does not take much for our lot to fill up very quickly, so that's why we bring in the valet. So, one of the big pushes has been for us to try to have a way to kind of offset some of these costs with the valet parking. It's about, roughly for us, about $1,850 an hour per valet that we have in the evening. So, on a busy night, if they have three valets runnings, it can get quite expensive quite fast. So, you know, and in terms of being able to set a monetary threshold, certainly could happen, could make sense. In terms of the tipping, though, I think that it would really kind of discourage folks, especially young folks who want to be valets, to, that rely on that extra income, knowing friends that are valets, that kind of depend on that.
Pay them a decent wage.
But since we are...
The tipping can drive some of us crazy.
Absolutely. Since we do use the third-party vendors, though, you know, that is up to the third-party vendor to determine their wages for the folks.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
So, your valet service works, and do you park all cars on-site?
Currently, yes. We do park all cars on-site.
Currently? And if you didn't, I mean, have you ever had an overflow?
There's been small amounts of overflow in the past, yes. Our valets are pretty adept at double parking cars in ways that keep the fire lanes open on property. If, and there was a need, they may spill out into the street. Yes, that could happen, particularly with the high-end clientele that we get there at the property. We do want our guests to not have to walk far from off-property, particularly ladies in heels. That would be inconvenient for them and a disadvantage.
So, you see continuing just parking on-site?
That is our goal. We don't expect any increases in our event load occupancies or anything like that, so we're not seeing a huge impact that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Commissioner Erickson?
The draft doesn't address the charges for valet parking. So, if there were, so, this is a question that I'm going to ask the staff, too, in a minute. So, if there were varying rates in the town, and the delta of those rates was significant, let's say by 100%, you know, some places were $1, and some were 2, and I'm using those examples to illustrate the delta not, I mean, obviously, they'd be higher than that if they were 20 versus 40 or something. Is there a moment at which time it wouldn't be in the overall interest to have great variation in those charges, and therefore, that would have a dampening effect on the business district, you know, from a reputational sense, or would cause issues between businesses in the town that would suggest that the town should make some attempt at regulating the... From a, I'm talking from not the town standpoint, but from looking after the vitality in the downtown area.
Certainly, as a business, you know, when you go up to hotels in large cities, even downtown San Jose, it's not uncommon to pay for parking people expect to pay for parking when they go to a property. So, you know, for us being where we're located, I couldn't speak to any other business. We're pretty isolated away from a lot of the other businesses.
Can I re-try my question? I'm not talking about charging for it. I'm talking about deltas between, so if one business that has valet parking is charging $20, another's charging 40, another is charging 60, is there, would there be an issue between merchants, if you would, in the town, if we ended up with large variances between them?
I think it kind of goes to the caliber of property, perhaps, you know, a property like Hotel Los Gatos maybe charge a premium for parking, whereas a property like the Toll House may not charge the same rates, just because of the clientele that they're drawing in.
Right. And you're okay, because you're suggesting, well, so you're suggesting...
Not to be a jab, sorry.
Well, okay. But, no, no, that's okay. So, you're suggesting that, by your example, and I don't worry about the other ones that you used, so you're suggesting that it's, in all likelihood, if there were variance, that you might be on the high end of that variance, potentially. That's what I concluded from, you said, without worrying about the other examples that you used. And you're okay with that, and you don't think that would cause issues between you and other merchants in the town?
I don't foresee that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Mr. Paulson, I don't think you addressed the parking assessment district question I had.
I did not.
Yes. Would you feel like enlightening?
We still have a speaker, so I didn't know. I thought you had a question for the speaker. Okay. If we have no more questions for the speaker, thank you very much. I will close the public portion, and now, we will go back to asking questions of staff. Commissioner Talisfor?
So, Ms. Talisfor, in relation to the parking assessment district, typically, the whole reason for the valet is to get more cars on the site. It wouldn't affect the parking spaces. The only time that would be a problem is if they're taking away parking spaces that are required on-site. The parking assessment district spaces, as you know, are located throughout all of the town parking lots, so they wouldn't be impacting those, because we wouldn't be allowing them to park on-town parking lots. So, I don't foresee an issue with parking assessment district credits or parking spaces.
And would there ever be shared parking on one site? You know, paid valet versus none?
I think those are, I think those are things that we'll have to look at on a case-by-case basis, depending on the parking lot, and I think that's where some of this charging and tipping conversation is different, if you have three-parking-space parking lot versus a 50-space parking lot. So, you know, that's something that definitely can be part of your recommendation, but until we actually see what those look like, we're not going to know. But I imagine there will be circumstances where they'll have areas where people can self-park versus valet park in certain circumstances.
I just have two questions. And one is about, this wasn't vetted with the Parking Transportation Committee, Commission. I wondered, did any of this go out to the residents? Have we vetted this idea with residents? You know, we have such a strong commitment to community participation in a lot of our issues, and I could see that this would be important.
This has been noticed through the public noticing process that we always use, so it's been posted as any other agenda would be. There's been no other specific outreach that's specifically to looking at charging versus not charging.
Okay. And then, I had one other question, and that is, if I can find it.
Question.
Yeah. No, it's not really, but these are questions that I... How, well, this is a pretty basic question. I still don't understand quite how this will, how this is going to work. So, tell me, would a place like Old Town be able to have paid valet parking during the day and night?
Yes, they could.
Okay. And then, how does that create more parking for Los Gatos?
So, currently, Old Town asks you to only park there if you're patronizing their businesses. And when there are special events in town, they even have a parking attendant out there making sure that you're coming in to patronize their business, and that's certainly something they can do, as that is their private lot. It would create more spaces, in that when you valet park, you do something called stacking cars. So, sometimes, they get as many as twice as many cars in one space. So, it's creating more parking, in that people who are now eating at the wine cellar or eating at California Cafe are staying within federal realty, who is the property owner there, staying within their property to park, and they're not taking a space on the street that now someone could take if they're going to, say, the Lexington House for dinner. So, that's how it creates more parking.
Okay. And so, a follow-up to that is, would federal realty or any of these places consider having a validation?
I don't, I can't speak specifically for federal. I know that when we spoke with Mr. Holt, it was something that he had thought about. If you eat in a restaurant, you know, there's a, maybe a validation system. I think it's something that no one has, or these business owners haven't explored, because it hasn't been an option for them, so it hasn't been something they've spent time looking at.
Okay. Thank you for now.
Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Erickson, Commissioner Kane.
I have to turn the mic on. Okay. On the draft, on page five of the report, beginning with the number one, when you come down to "in," and it says, "Prior to the issuance of the permit, furnish the town with liability and property damage insurance." Reading the, assuming this is an ordinance, how does one determine what kind of insurance and you have, liability and property? Is it $100,000? Is it $1 million? Is it, what is it? And how do we know?
So, we have standards that have been set by policy with the town, and we would hand that for any of the businesses that have to indemnify us.
Wouldn't you reference that, then?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. That's definitely...
I mean, when you read it, it's like, what are they talking about? Then, if you look down to, oh, private, private valet parking is approved by the Development, blah, blah, blah. The Development Review Committee shall have the discretion to deny. I don't know what discretion rests upon. What is the standard that they could deny? I mean, if it's arbitrary, you and I both know that's a bit of a problem. So, I suggest to you that we come up with something that would be enforceable. And then, the other issue is, and it might be solved with a one-year permit, but there's no provision in here to rescind or remove a permit. So, if a guy's got a permit and he's not doing good things, we don't provide how you take it away. So, I'd like us to think about that. And then, just finally, just a comment. I love the Holtz restaurants. Very, very nice. Their parking lot is totally inadequate, but it's more than most people have, so I'm not criticizing them. But if they start charging for valet, what is that, what's the point of having that parking lot? I mean, if you're going to allow people to charge you for their parking because it's quote-unquote "valet," you're going to find that all the free parking in town is going to disappear, because if it's a parking lot of any size, why wouldn't you have a valet? It'd be like, no free parking. You can't do other than valet. So, the guy's got 50 spots, there are 10 cars there, and you got a valet. That changes the whole thing of town. I think if we're going to try to solve a problem, I'm all for that, but if we're trying to create a problem, I have a problem with that. And I can tell you from my experience, if you can find a parking spot at Holtz, good luck. I occasionally will find one spot. If they're going to use valet, yeah, they can put more spots in there, I suppose, but I just kind of wonder, what is the point of this thing? And there is a good point, but I don't think it's to provide money to people. If I can't find a parking spot in Holtz, I find a parking spot someplace else, and I walk. Now, you're going to say, well, let's triple-space in Holtz, and we're going to charge for it. You're saying in your head, no, but that's what it, that's all I'm hearing. So, if somebody wants recommendations from us, I find this very vague and not clear at all.
So, we wrestle with those exact same issues that you're wrestling with, and those can be issues that I think the DRC is going to have to wrestle with, and you might see some of those on appeals. But with Holtz, let me explain a little bit better than that. Is his model is that you can still park free in his lot when the lot fills up, or if there's...
He can triple...
No, he's not triple-spacing there at all. When you want a valet, he goes across the street to the bank with your car and parks in the valet.
You have a rule that says he can't? You just told us a minute ago...
That would be part of his conditions. His conditions is, his lot is still being used for the free parking lot, so that would be part of his conditions.
Will everybody have those conditions?
So, you're not, you're not, yes, everyone would have that condition.
Then, how do we get triple parking in?
You either have the, for that, he wouldn't even need to triple-park, because he's over at the bank building where there's plenty of parking. But you could triple-park over at the bank across the street.
Take the hotel. At the moment, they've got a lot of parking, and we just heard, hey, we can really solve the big problems, because we'll triple-park. Now, if you say, well, no, you can't triple-park, because Tom comes in, and he likes to park his own car, and you want to charge him 10 bucks for a valet you may or may not need. I don't think you're addressing those issues. And the fact that Holt, at the moment, goes to a lot is great, but why would he go to the lot if he can triple-park and maybe make a profit out of it? And I'm not against people making a profit, but if we're making a situation, we have a lot of parking in town. I almost never, I have to walk, but I almost never cannot find a parking spot. If we're going to, I think it's great to triple-park, but not if it means the people that normally would have parked there must pay, no matter what, if it's empty or not, they still have to pay to use a valet. I would be, I'd go to Campbell a lot.
It was Commissioner Erickson, then Commissioner Kane, and then Commissioner Badami.
Well, I'll make one comment in response to what Commissioner O'Donnell was saying, and then, I have three questions for the staff. So, I'm not, it's not my problem to solve as a planning commissioner or a farmer of the town council, wouldn't necessarily be my problem to solve whether Alex Holt, if he decides to charge valet parking, whether it's detrimental or positive to his business. You know, that's a business question for him, and if he pisses you off and you don't, you know...
As you said, I assume also...
Yeah.
This is a link...
They also represent...
I'm going to, I'm going to, Commissioner O'Donnell, I'm going to ask that it stay to the personnel questions, because I think there's a lot of dialogue that needs to happen here.
Anyway, so I want to be sure I understand a couple of things. So, in section, so this is about, in sections L and M, so I'm inferring from it so that, in fact, the permit runs with the permit E, neither with the, so it runs, and it runs specifically with the business, if I understand M and I understand L correctly. So, not with the owner of the property, but with the, I would conclude that it runs with the person operating the business.
So, we actually call out in the first, I believe it's in A, that it could be a property owner, and we did that, for example, for federal realty, if they wanted to do it as a property owner, but they would have to have the agreeance of every tenant there, because we did consider the same thing that you're talking about. If you have four businesses that share a parking lot, and the property owner wants to do it, you would want all four businesses on board, because if one of those businesses does not want the paid valet, you know, then you have that conundrum to consider. So, that's why we've written it in here, that if it is the property owner, or even if it is one of the businesses. So if The Wine Cellar wanted to offer paid valet in the evening, you know, they would need all the other rest people to be in agreement.
Right. Then I would suggest that you look at... because I would interpret L because it talks about the permitees' hours of operation. So if you use your example, there could be different hours. There are different hours of operation between that. So it's... so one might want to look at the language to be sure that it's clear because I was concluding it was the business owner. Then in section O, it talks about the ability of the DRC to... if none of the criteria are met, which is fine, so that leaves a discretion. So there's a set of criteria in there. And it says that has the ability to revoke the parking permit with so many days' notice. But it doesn't say on what basis that it could. And I don't know what the right language is, but it... I mean, without stated otherwise, presumably it could be revoked for any purpose by just simply giving them 10 days' notice, which does not seem to be fair or appropriate to the holder of the permit. So while I would understand that you want to be cautious with that language, to not address it leaves the business operator more vulnerable than I think the intent is. And then I want to come back to the question, which I asked him about would... and this is really a business question. Is there an interest that the town has if there are variations, large variations in the valet charges that have some potential? I don't know. But does it... and you do this all the time. Does it have some... you know my question.
Yeah, there's certainly different perspectives on this. And I think that one is a business is going to regulate that. So if two businesses sell the same T-shirt, and one sells it for $50 and one sells it for $30, you might start patronizing the $30 business. So there's also this... while the other businesses may say, hey, you're only charging $20 and I'm charging $25, the intent is that you're going to that business. So if the business owner starts to hear, I don't want to pay $25 to park in your lot, or $10, or whatever it is, then that would be their business decision at that point to go back and forth on that. We don't regulate what's charged on other things, so I can't... I don't see the nexus to regulate that.
Let me ask a quick follow-up question.
One more.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So is there the danger, the risk, if the valet charges get high enough, even if... and I subscribe to the marketplace argument which you just made, that the downtown area, albeit the overwhelming percentage of parking spots will still be free under this plan, that the town could inadvertently get a reputation... the downtown area could get a reputation that you have to pay when you go to downtown Los Gatos? And how does one think about that, I guess is the question?
That could certainly happen. The thing that I think we will find if this were to be adopted is that there really aren't that many private lots that are large enough to do this and that would make it lucrative enough for the business. You know, we went through and we looked at places who have their own parking spots, and it's probably close to 80%, but many of them have one space or two space, and it just doesn't make sense. There's maybe 10 places that have enough spots that they could even think about it. And then at that point, if they even have enough room to still keep a fire lane, would be questionable.
The only way I see this in any businesses is really the Holt's model, is that you have the ability to put the stand on private property. So now you've eliminated anything on Santa Cruz, Gardenos, Lexington House. They've got no place to put a stand because we're not allowing them right of way. And then you've got to find a third-party parking lot to park your cars in. When you talk about Old Town, yes, you could have the restaurant... the seller do it. But they're going to have to find parking that's off-site, not within that parking lot. If you thought somehow they were going to reconfigure that parking lot and still have fire lanes and still meet all the requirements of all the other tenants, no. But if the seller could put up a stand there and someone wanted to just drive up, get out of their car and pay, and their car is taken over to the Wells Fargo parking lot and then picked back up after the end of the night, you've created more spots for people in that scenario. But there's not that many that allow... that's going to fit that mold that I've been able to find, and I've been walking the neighborhood for quite a bit trying to figure it out. If we allow them in the right of way, then I think that could lead to quite a bit more issues.
I think, though, if I may, we wouldn't prohibit that. So for example, Willow Street, the Linden Plaza, if you currently... what the vendor that's there is Corinthian, and what they currently do is they call it assisted stacked parking. So if you pull in and there's three spaces available, they say, go ahead, take a space, keep your keys. If you pull in and there's not a space available, they take your keys and they park your car when there is a space available, or they double-park. So that's an example of how you could utilize both. I think that my understanding with the Holt's application is they do want to use their own lot and then have a secondary agreement. So we could look at if you have, you know, if you weigh in on one or the other, they're not allowed to use their own lot. But I think many people may not have the ability to do a parking agreement, so they may say, we want to use a section of our lot to stack.
So it's Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Badami.
This is turning out to be an 18-sided circle. And when I read it, I envisioned the problem here, and I'm hearing even more problems tonight. I'm going to go to Alex Holt and think I know what I'm talking about. I served with Alex on the Chamber, Board of Directors, and what he was talking about was his south-side parking lot being open to the public. But when it got filled, he would like to have a valet situation for that kind of overflow. The story that he tells is often, three people will come into the restaurant and wait 20 minutes for the driver to arrive, if they were riding four in a car. And he hates that. And that's happened over and over because he's in a tight spot. He's got a freeway, a highway. And what he wants to do is have an independent consideration where he can take somebody's car across the street to the bank or the town lot or the whatever, which most of us wouldn't cross Highway 9 per se. So... and that makes a little bit of sense. I'm going to try to underscore again what I envision as a merit to having regulated on the expense, $10, $15. And you know, you could put an ad in the paper, we'll park your car for $15, and enlist the vendors that are willing and able to do that, a Town Vitality person, partner with Chamber of Commerce. I wouldn't... I wouldn't... I'm listening to other voices, but I would not not regulate this. I'd keep it simple so that people want to come here, it's $10, it's $15. Profit schmoffit, you know? You underwrite the expense of choosing to have a valet service. You don't make that a profit center because that wouldn't work for us. Go to Los Gatos, pay $30, but no. You go to Los Gatos, you pay $10 to park your car. And the vendors who can do it and make a profit, Holt's would be happy because he's dying to get more parking spaces. And others who can't afford it, don't do it. That's the free-market system. But don't let that parking expense be free-market. I just see that as a nightmare. I have a question. We did this during Christmas, right? We have some valet services. What's been our accident insurance experience? Have we had bang-ups and fenders and...
So the company that does it has to supply their own insurance and indemnify us. So from a town standpoint, we have no liability. I can't... in my two years, we've had no claims. I mean, if we were to get one and someone called and said their car was damaged, we'd point them in the direction of the insurance company and the company that is doing the valet servicing.
Still, it'd be important to get a competent service so that, again, we didn't run it... we didn't create a snake pit that wasn't there before. I think this is complicated, and I don't know what my fellow commissioners want to do. We looked at best practices.
And we agree, it's very complicated. We've spent a lot of time trying to figure out all the different scenarios and issues, and you've brought up more that we didn't even think about.
I feel strongly about the regulation on dollars, and I'd like to know what best practices are and the reasons to do otherwise because I'd really like to keep it simple, stupid. We're going to park your car for $15, bring a $20 bill. Yeah, I don't know. Just keep it simple and make it enhance the experience, not complicated.
All right, Commissioner Badami.
You know, we're a really small town. And when I look at item number J and K, it talks about the safe operation of vehicles and traffic operations. So in regard to traffic and vehicles, I've seen a pattern that if there's no history of any accidents, it's considered safe. But in regards to Mr. Holt's application, I'm trying to figure out how he would ferry those cars across the highway because he's either going to have to block off his lot to allow the stacking of cars right at that easement. I don't know if that's an easement between the public lot and his private lot. So would he not block that off and take cars into the public lot and then hit Highway 9 where you have to go across three lanes of traffic or two to get into the left-hand turning lane to then go into the bank parking lot? Or is he going to exit out onto University, which he would have to make a right because there are solid double-yellow lines? So then he would have to go the opposite way of where he wants to valet the cars and make a U-turn at some point. So who's going to determine if this is safe? It's right at an intersection, crosswalks, driveway. So do we just wait for an accident to happen? Otherwise, it's safe? These are my concerns.
So we don't have a specific application in front of us. I know we're using that as an example quite a bit. But under the process, that would be in front of the DRC, which has an engineer on that board, which has a fire captain on that board. And they would go through the process to evaluate that and the safety of what the routes would be, how the stacking would occur, what would happen if it stacked too much. And those things aren't allowed. I think we've kind of put in the permit, in the ordinance specifically, that you can't stack out into University. So I don't want to use... I don't want to use too much of a specific application, but there is a process that would vet those issues. One of the things we discussed is whether maybe the DRC shouldn't be the deciding body for these issues if you have that much concern, and we'll bring them to you guys.
I have a lot of concern. And by the way, I have one other comment, Madam Chair, if I may. And that is, there's a lot of follow-up and code enforcement and possible increased police complaints with parking lot disputes. But back to the insurance issue on number N, which Commissioner O'Donnell had brought up, we're going to have to monitor the insurance certificates because people do let their insurance lapse. So every year, we're going to have to get updated certificates from all the valet businesses.
We monitor over 500, 600 contracts, 700. We monitor so many thousands of contracts right now. So we've got those procedures in place that monitor just huge amounts of contracts that we have. So I'm not too concerned with that issue. For how many... we'll get three or four, if that, out of this.
So if we get three or four, is it worth it to go through all this?
That's... it's brought by council.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson was next.
Yeah, since I've heard some of this issue before, having been on the Transportation and Parking Commission, I mean, I generally think this is a good idea. But I do think it needs... it may need more controls, and there may be more issues that we haven't thought of. I think there actually is a fair amount of criteria in here reading through relative to doing this. I wondered if, rather than making this a permanent ordinance, though, that if it wouldn't be a good idea, just like we've... the town did with the green bike lanes and has done with other things. I believe the downtown valet parking... Monica, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it was originally done on a trial basis, and then it's continued as a regular basis because we've gotten really positive feedback for doing so. So maybe one approach to this would be to do a trial. And do a trial for like a year or six months or something. Put some controls on it, like a maximum that could be charged for the valet parking. And then do a reevaluation to see if the process is right and if the feedback's right and if there's, you know, things that disputes that came up that we hadn't thought of. But that way, it's not going to be a permanent part of our code. That's just a thought I had.
So it already is a permanent part of your code, but you just can't charge. So that's really why it's in front of you. Your code specifically says you can't charge unless the town's charging and we're not charging parking.
You can't create a temporary revision to the ordinance saying that we're under these conditions for this amount of time we'll allow because you have everything but the amount of time in here.
Sure, you could certainly pass it where it will automatically lapse within a certain period of time. That recommendation could be... I just want to make certain you understood why it was coming in front of you. If Holt's had agreed that he didn't want to charge, this issue might not be in front of you. And he could be doing valet right now.
All right, I saw Commissioner Towles for, and then I thought Commissioner O'Donnell raised your hand. Okay.
So I just have like one last question and a lot of comments, but I don't know... So I'll ask, is this going to be cash-based only or credit card?
We wouldn't control that.
So it's up to however they want to do it?
Yes.
Okay, and then how about the signage for valet parking? Is that going to be somewhat branded so it looks like it's all town? Or how's that going to work?
We haven't discussed a branding for the valet signs, but the signage would be addressed in the conditions of approval as far as where it could be, what it could look like, how big it could be.
So that would be up to the owner of the business?
It would be up to them to present it to the town, and it would be up to the DRC to approve it. You could certainly make a recommendation if you wanted something to be branded or be within certain parameters. That would be something you could do.
Okay. I think that's all for now, and I think most of my comments are in discussion, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think that I have not heard enough evidence or facts for me to make an intelligent decision on this. Turns out, this is a really complex thing. And I guess, not having been in on it from the beginning, I don't understand the problem because when you hear, well, what's the advantage of valet parking? I heard about double and triple... doing... going to double the parking downtown. Then I say, well, wait a minute, that's not right. And then we say, well, no, that's not exactly what we want to do. So I'm sure there's some really good thoughts here, and I'm sure you people understand it, but I don't. And then the question becomes, is it really important that I understand it? Well, it only becomes important if we're supposed to make a recommendation to the town council, and that's what this says. So I'm not sure this ought to be before us because this is pretty complex. I personally, if I were going to have to make a recommendation on this, I'd like a study session. And believe me, I'm not looking for study sessions. But if I had to make a recommendation on this, then I want people to explain it to me by saying, here are three or four examples of what we're talking about. Because I haven't really heard that. I've heard things that are inconsistent with what I've heard later. So if we have to... I mean, I've got two possibilities. Either we have a study session if it's important enough, or I'm just going to vote against this. So that's it.
Commissioner Kane, you had just had your hand up.
There was a comment on Commissioner Hanson. Not that we have a sunset clause, that it expires in one year, but that we have a mandatory review clause to carry it forward. That's what a merchant would want. So that way, he or she can depend upon employee reliability, quality of employee, insurance continuity, that kind of thing, and each one be independent, depending upon how many there were, so that they would put their best foot forward to do the right job to get that renewal. But rather than have a sunset, have a required renewal going forward. That's what the merchant could live with, not the other thing. But I totally agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. Yep, but once again, this is very complicated, and I don't feel qualified, prepared at this point to take something this complicated and send it up to town council like we knew we were doing when I don't.
Commissioner Towles for, then Commissioner Badami.
It's along the same lines. After I read through this and then after I started thinking about it and I came up with my list of 12 questions, which probably could be 24 by now, I realized I don't have enough information. I don't know what parking lots we're talking about. I don't know exactly how that's going to work. It sounds right now as if it's one person, maybe two people, maybe three, looking for this kind of parking. And maybe they should just do it on their own. I don't know why we want to turn this into another program that the town has to regulate. So that's just my thought here. There's lots of ways to approach this. There's encouraging businesses to share parking. There's... what is... I wrote some things down. There's also reexamining employee parking and creating some kind of incentive for employees to be maybe parked somewhere else. There's mixed-use parking at peak hours and non-peak hours. And also look at restricted paid valet parking on some of these lots from a certain hour to a certain hour, but not all day. I don't think we've explored all of it. And the other thing that I'm really concerned about, and I asked the question, is that this hasn't been as public as it should be. A few years ago, the town had considered having parking meters in the town on Santa Cruz Avenue. And I remember that it was in the newspaper, advertised as an article. This chamber was filled for at least two meetings, and I was here as just a resident. And there was a lot of opinions about that. So I'm really concerned that if we were to put this in place, we haven't notified everybody. And as far as us taking another look at this, I don't know if it's a study session or it's another group or we come up with questions, but something more needs to be done. This is not to be taken lightly.
Commissioner Badami. Then Commissioner Kane.
So I agree with all that's been said. I could not forward a recommendation at this point. I don't think we have enough information. I'm not crazy about a study session. What I'd like to see done before even a study session is considered, which could be at some point, is that it goes before the Parking and Transportation Commission.
Commissioner Kane.
I'm ready to make a motion. It's not the motion I was going to make, Commissioner Badami. You know, I make a motion that we, what, you want to send this to another subcommittee? I don't, I'm not opposed to a, a, a study session. How do we handle the 45,000-page tree ordinance?
So at this point, point in time, we need to make a recommendation to council, and it appears that the recommendation is, is that you can't make a recommendation on this time because you need further study, you need it to potentially go to the Transportation Committee and come back to you for a study session, and then council would make that determination whether they want to go forward with the ordinance or go by your recommendation.
So that would be alternative number three, continue the matter to a date certain?
No.
Then it would be recommendation of before? Okay.
Could I just ask one question on that? Perhaps if the Transportation Commission does a thorough job, it would make our job much easier. In other words, based on the paper I've got in front of me, I don't feel like I have enough information. That doesn't mean if some agency or board that perhaps has more expertise in this did it and came up with their report, we might not be able to say, hey, that's a great report, or tweak this or tweak that. But I can, my feeling isn't that we should do it, but somebody's got to do it. And so therefore, Commissioner Badami's suggestion, I think, is a good one. So I, I would ask Commissioner Kane if he would consider if he's going to make a motion that we simply, and I would ask staff if we can do this, because normally it's up to the council to decide where it goes, we don't get to say, oh, step back, we're going to send it to somebody else. So you're shaking your head like, we can't do that. Okay, so we can't do that.
You can make that recommendation to council, that it be sent to transportation and it be studied further because of all of the issues raised, you were unable to make a recommendation for this ordinance.
Well, then I would ask the maker of the motion to consider whether we ought to deny it based on the facts we have before us with the suggestion to council A and B.
Is the denial necessary? Or is that a recommendation to council? I recommend, I, my, my, my motion is, I recommend we advise town council, that would be a good idea to send it to the Transportation Committee, along with the minutes or the video of this meeting, and have them vet that issue and send it back to us so that we're in a better place to serve the town council better. That's my motion.
Even for a workshop study session with this board?
Right, so this, this motion then could be for a continuance.
No, it's got to get to the council.
I mean, go to, I mean, we would continue, we would like, how do we do this?
Your, your decision tonight needs to go to council.
The recommendation goes to council to send it to transportation, back to us, then back to them.
Right, okay, to send, all right, bye. All right, so we have a motion. Commissioner Erickson?
Can I have the motion repeated, so I'm sure what I'm voting on?
We're recommending to town council that the immediate question be sent to the Transportation, the Transportation in what committee?
Parking.
Transportation and Parking Committee, along with notes from this meeting or the video from this meeting, for them to give this a thorough vetting, send it back to us, and then we will give it thorough vetting in the form of a workshop or a study session or something where we can informally work very hard on a complicated document, and then we will give the recommendation to town council.
Along with, along with more community input, which was raised.
Yes.
Isn't it possible, because I agree with what was just said, but I just want to understand, in essence, we were asked tonight to deny or to approve?
You're, you're recommending no changes.
Okay, what we're really recommending is, we cannot approve. If you want to take that as a denial, I guess that's fine, but what we're really saying is, this body would need more information, and we are suggesting that perhaps a better body to do the background work, I don't know this as a fact, would be the Transportation Committee. If the council agrees with that, I, just sitting here with all seven of us doing all this at the moment, doesn't seem very effective.
No.
But it's not because we aren't trying or we aren't, so perhaps it would be better. So anyway, just parsing it down again, we are, we're not approving it. If you want to take that as a denial, so be it, but what we're really doing is advising the council as what we just said.
I'm recommending what I recommend.
Right, okay, so I, I'm-
Not approving?
They can do what they want.
It's rejecting, it's denial, whatever you'd like to call it.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to second the motion.
It's a spa.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. Right. We now move on to item number six, considering adoption of amendments to Section 29.10.09025 of Chapter 29, Zoning Regulations, Home Occupations of the Town Code to include cottage food industry businesses and additional prohibited home occupation usages, uses. Are you, who's giving the report tonight?
Ms. Castro is unavailable this evening. Staff doesn't have anything to add to the staff report. The Assembly Bill was adopted in 2012 that requires jurisdictions to modify their codes to allow cottage food production as a permitted use via home occupation permit. This proposed code amendment would make the town's zoning ordinance in compliance with state law, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend adoption to the town council.
Madam Chair. Actually, Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Kane.
Well, it seemed like a formality to me, so I was going to make a motion, but if you wanted to make a comment, Commissioner Kane?
No, I was going to say, is this analogous to the solar thing we had last week where I said to the town, town attorney, is this already a law? He said, yes, he said, I want to make a motion, so go ahead.
Okay, all right, I will make a motion. I move to forward recommendation of ordinance for home occupations, A-13-002. I've made the determinations by sequo, and I can make the finding that the Town Code amendments are consistent with the general plan.
We have a second? Commissioner Kane?
I'll second that motion.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. I assume you were an aye. Nope. All right, do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
Briefly, on October 6th, the town council had a town council meeting. Two items that were discussed that evening were a study session for alcohol and entertainment. They took public testimony and didn't get, really get deep into the discussion, so that was continued. And then they also discussed formula retail, outdoor seating, what's the third, there's another one involved in that, specialty retail.
Yes.
And so they, they looked at that and continued that as well, and so those items will continue forward, and as we get additional information, we will pass that on to the Planning Commission. The other is, I believe, December 4th is the deadline for submitting for boards and commissions, so any of you who are interested in either re-upping or know folks who may be interested in serving on a body, then please let them know.
Do we have any other commission matters? Commissioner, Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question for staff. I noticed in the, I noticed in a couple of the staff reports we got for this meeting that there was mention of the town council having worked on the strategic goals matrix and that the item was referred to in there, and I was thinking that it would be helpful if we had that. So is that possible? I mean, I, I tried finding it on the website and I didn't, maybe I just didn't look in the right place, but I, I know I would really like to see that because I, I think it would help a lot in terms of future things as well, to know that, where it is on the town council's radar screen.
Great, we'll, we'll get that to you.
I would like to remind everyone that we have a study session next Wednesday, October 21st, from 4 until 6. Vice Chair and I met with staff. We are going to try to set this up, as in, in the first 30 minutes, we're going to talk about the color averaging, and then we're going to try to take the rest of the time, I believe, for the visibility. We felt that based on earlier comments and discussion, that was how they were weighted in concerns and comments, so that's how we're going to try to set that up. But if anyone has any other ideas, let me know, but just reminder that we all have to be here next Wednesday at 4:00. Are there any other commission matters? Commissioner Towles for it?
I would imagine that the color averaging ran over by five minutes, that would be.
No. No. No, you know, at 4:30, I probably wouldn't care, you know, almost 11, we all start getting a little. Any other commission matters? All right, meeting's adjourned.